Good evening, welcome to our April 16th, 2024 City Council Meeting. It is 7:09 PM, meeting is now in session. Tonight, we will take a moment for silent prayer or meditation and then Councilman Contos will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Please remove all hats and place your right hand on your heart and follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos?
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Yep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Present. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, so we will move on to our presentation portion of the meeting. We are acknowledging April as Autism Awareness Month. Every April, Autism Speak celebrates World Autism Month, beginning with United Nations sanctioned World Autism Awareness Day on April 2nd. Today, misconceptions of autism and the frequency in which people are excluded threaten access to the vital information, resources, and support autistic people and their families need. This World Autism Month and beyond, we are asking people to join with Autism Speaks and act fearlessly for change by standing for a world where autistic people are recognized and have the opportunities they deserve. And so, before reading the proclamation, Paul, I'd just love if you could share a little bit about Polly's project and the work you've been doing with autism.
Sure, definitely. Thank you so much. Yeah, so my name is Paul, I'm the founder of Polly's Project. My son is Polly, he's gonna be, actually today's his birthday, 27 years old, so. But yeah, Polly was born blind and he's autistic, so it's a difficult situation. You know, we feed Polly, he's in diapers, we bathe him. At a young age, you know, being that Polly can't see and talk, we found out that music really soothed and calmed him. So about 10 years ago, I was doing work in Skid Row, I'm a big advocate for those experiencing homelessness. I saw a homeless gentleman wearing headphones and he was smiling and he had that same excitement with music as Polly. So I went home, I was tossing and turning, like, alright God, you put something in my heart, how do I help the homeless incorporating music and Polly? So I started Polly's Project, we started donating free radios to the homeless. Fast forward 10 years later, now we have a street outreach team. We go out the first and third Sunday of the month, we have a street outreach, giving you know, food and basic essentials. We also opened something called Polly's Pantry, which is a local community food bank. And we're also having a big autism awareness event at the Pomona Fairgrounds this Saturday, and we have 3,000 people registered. So we do a lot in the community, we're all about giving back, it's inspired by my son Polly. And if you want to jump on board on Polly's Project, check us out. Thank you.
All right, so again, the work that you're doing, and I know that we're still looking to get you a permanent home for that pantry, and so please do check them out, the work they're doing is fantastic. And I know that having you here is really important to bring that awareness, to bring that inclusivity, and to really providing a space where families can go and enjoy and be in community together. I know I was at an event with you in Azusa and it was just a wonderful time to all be together, so thank you for the work you do. And again, let's all continue to come together as community.
Thank you.
All right, now we are going to provide our proclamation, Observing Arbor Day. So if our Treasurer, Colleen Rosati of West Covina Beautiful, can come to the front. All right, so Arbor Day, Nebraska newspaper editor Jay Sterling Morton had an enthusiasm for trees. Once he became Secretary of the Nebraska Territory, he further spread his message of the value of trees. And on January 4th, 1872, Morton first proposed a tree planting holiday to be called Arbor Day. The celebration date was set for April 10th, 1872. It was estimated that more than, that's, yeah? 1872, that's, that was right, right, right before us. It was estimated that more than 1 million trees were planted in Nebraska on the first Arbor Day. Today Arbor Day is celebrated in all 50 states. The most common date for the first observance is the last Friday in April, National Arbor Day. But a number of state Arbor Days are at other times to coincide with the best tree planting weather, from January and February in the south to May in the far north. We are doing ours, this is the 27th? April 27th, that is correct. So before I hand you this proclamation, Treasurer Colleen Rosati, CEO of West Covina Beautiful, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor, for this honor, we sincerely appreciate it. Colleen Rosati, President of West Covina Beautiful. For those of you that know, we've been around for 76 years, we are the oldest, not dating back to 1872, but we're one of the oldest organizations here in the city and proud to be. So every year, we have an Arbor Day celebration and tree planting ceremony, and this is really a benchmark for the city in itself. There's a couple components that come with this celebration. And the first is celebrating Arbor Day and acknowledging the environment and bringing environmental awareness to our community. Plant trees, clean up after yourself, recycle, reclaim, and reuse, all important things. We have community partners like Athens and Suburban Water who help us keep West Covina beautiful. The other component is our scholarships, where it is tied to an art contest, where all schools in West Covina can enter. The theme is "Help Keep West Covina Beautiful." Tomorrow, we are going to be judging, and the girls are helping, like 95 posters, and we're gonna be giving some scholarship funds to those outstanding students here in West Covina that have taken the time to do a little artwork in celebration of Arbor Day. The other component, if you will, is celebrating those folks, outstanding leaders that have passed away. We started this about 20 years ago, and we decided that this is a perfect time to plant a tree in memory of outstanding leaders that have dedicated and have been committed to the city of West Covina. And over the years, we've had trees planted in memory of Congressman Esteban Torres, who lives in West Covina, Mayor Bradley McFadden, many commissioners, police officers, with a little touch of love from West Covina Beautiful. I can't tell you how touching it is when we have the celebration and the families come and we acknowledge their loved one with this tree, which is a symbol of them caring on and still being here with us with the dedication and commitment. So this year, I'd like to acknowledge the ones that we're honoring. One is Police Officer Matt Ortiz of West Covina PD, former mayor and veteran. The other one is a trailblazer, and many of you who have watched council meetings probably know her, Carolyn Art, who was President of the Approvance Association, and just an activist for the city. If something needed to be done, Carolyn was there. She just recently passed. And the last one will be Carol Mulner, who is a former Commissioner for Community Service and for the seniors, always trying to do better for the seniors, making sure that they're not overlooked and taken care of. So on the 27th of April, we will be celebrating and acknowledging these three folks, along with a lot of fun for the kids, we've got environmental awareness going on, we have sponsors, all free, come, put a little dirt on a tree, celebrate, bring your kids out here at City Hall from 11 to, eh, one-ish, free giveaways, and we hope to see you there. I want to introduce these amazing young ladies. These girls keep me together. They are students, in my crazy moments. They're students at Mount SAC Early Academy, College Academy, Ryan Mecca, and I'd like to introduce Victoria Virgin and her sister, Carleen, my little buddy, Virgin, and they'd like to say a few words.
Hi, everybody. First off, I would like to thank West Covina City Council for honoring us here, and I would also like to thank West Covina Beautiful for allowing me and my sister the opportunity to give back to our community. We are born and raised in West Covina, so you know, it's always been kind of, you know, our passion to give back, and we're just so thankful to have found this program and Ms. Colleen to have us on the Council for West Covina Beautiful, so just thank you.
Hi, I'm Carleen Virgin, I'm Victoria's little sister, I'm also part of the Youth Council for West Covina Beautiful. Like my sister, I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I will, as a freshman, like I hope for many opportunities like this to come, and I'm excited to see what the future holds.
These are our up and coming future leaders. These gals are dynamo, and I am so honored and privileged to have them as part of West Covina Beautiful's team. So thank you, Mayor Tabatabai, for this acknowledgement, we sincerely appreciate it.
Fantastic, all right, and everyone knows if there's no picture, it didn't happen. So now we are gonna, we have a proclamation honoring West Covina Small Business Week, April 28th through May 4th, so I'd like to invite Alejandro Garcia from our Economic Development and Housing Manager to the front. Hey. Every year, the United States Small Business Administration celebrates National Small Business Week on the first week of May to commemorate the contributions small businesses make to our community. Therefore, the city of West Covina does hereby proclaim April 28th, 2024 through May 4th, 2024, as National Small Business Week. Alejandro, if you can say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council members. The city of West Covina is thrilled to be hosting Small Business Week on May 2nd, Thursday, May 2nd, we will be having an event partnering with community partners. The event is designed to inspire, educate, encourage, and connect community with the small business, excuse me, the local small business community that we have here in West Covina. To kick off the celebration tonight, we want to take the opportunity to highlight one small business here in the city of West Covina as a recipient of our Small Business Week proclamation. In the month of March, the Community Economic Development Division launched a nomination form, and we received 26 nominations. Of those 26, 20 were individual nominees. After careful consideration, scoring, and review, we selected a small business to receive our proclamation. I like to call Bun Street Doug Ford, Matthew Smith, and his staff to be the recipient of this year's Small Business Week proclamation.
All right.
And as they're making their way up to the stage, I do want to highlight a couple of the comments that we did receive in the nominations. So Bun Street received a total of six nominations. Here are some comments. Best burger in San Gabriel Valley. Every time I'm in Bun Street, I always get great service with a smile. Bun Street supports the community throughout the year, particularly the senior community. Bun Street has donated pies during the holiday season and provides seniors discount every day. Bun Street has sponsored slash hosted San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball Meetings. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Yes, and Doug, if you could say a few words, I'd be remiss to not mention, they also have the best cookies at Scoop Street, so I always have to go and buy a dozen of the snickerdoodles. So just throwing that out there, it's a hidden secret, the cookies, and your recipe, from what I understand, so go ahead.
I'd like to introduce my management team here, all female, which we're very proud Rea is our general manager at Bun Street. Chef Jessica is our executive chef. Morena is our Warrior Cafe and catering manager, and other Rea is our Scoop Street manager. So we are very proud of having them.
First off, I extend my heartfelt thanks to the City Council, the selection committee, and all those who played a role in this decision. Your acknowledgement of our restaurant's contributions fills us with immense pride. Good evening, everyone, my name is Rea, I'm the general manager at Bun Street. Our establishment has been in labor of love with the commitment to community engagement. From our humble beginnings to the bustling hub it is today, we have strived to create memorable dining experiences. Bun Street is honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the small businesses in West Covina. There are many small businesses in West Covina that are independently owned by our city residents, and we are privileged to represent them all here tonight. Thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to say a few words? No? We're good? All right, if we can squeeze in, me and Mayor Pro Tem Wu were talking about our weight earlier, and I'm just, I'm gonna blame you for the tightness of this suit.
Mayor, yeah, you're right, too many burger.
All right, next, I'd like to invite Diane Franklin, PD's Victims Advocate, to the front. We have a certificate honoring National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 21st through Since 1987, National Crime Victims Rights Week has challenged the nation to confront and remove barriers to achieving justice for all victims of crime. Durs challenged the nation to confront and remove barriers to achieving justice for all victims of crime. During National Crime Victims Rights Week, we celebrate the accomplishments of the Victims' Rights Movement and reflect on how far we have come. So if you could please.
Good evening. West Covina has a really outstanding program for victims of domestic violence. You can be very grateful to our chief and all the guys that make our community safe of women and children, also men that are a victim. We are one of the only programs, and as my grandson said, it started in 1999, you know, when you were born, way back then. Our program is one of the only in the San Gabriel Valley where I accompany victims to court, follow them through the criminal justice systems, support groups, individual counseling, a whole array of services for them. So I want you to be very, very proud of West Covina Police Department.
Thank you, and I just want to say, obviously, the work that you do, it's heavy work, it's important work, and we really appreciate what you've done for our community. Chief Bell, the West Covina PD, the way it holds itself, I think all of us up here are extremely proud of our department and the way that we've engaged and really made this community feel like we are served and protected. So I want to thank you. And now, our West Covina PD, if we can invite our Baker to Vegas team, captains, and as many as want to come up here, Sergeant Chris Palagonas and Corporal Kenny Benitez. We have a certificate for our West Covina PD Baker to Vegas win. West Covina Police Department Team Number 39 competed in the Baker to Vegas Relay over the weekend of March 23rd and March 24th, where they placed first in the 99 category. The team completed the race in 15 hours and 26 minutes. Not only did the team break the WCPD record, but they broke the record for the 99 category. The team ran in honor of Officer Matthew Ortiz, who is pictured on the team's bib. The course begins 25 miles north of Baker, California, finishes inside the Rio All Suites Hotel and Casino Pavilion in Las Vegas. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, everybody, for having us here today. Obviously, our whole team's not here today, you know, other people are working and off and stuff like that, but basically, what Baker to Vegas is, is it's a relay race from Baker, California, all the way to Las Vegas. It's a total of 120 miles. This year, 258 law enforcement agencies participated, and the way it's broken down is it's broken down into different categories. So our category is the 99 category, and what that means is that the teams that are participating in that category is 99 officers and under. So it's a very small category, a lot, because a lot of agencies are bigger than 99, but the agencies that participated in that category this year, as far as the top three goes, is San Gabriel, along with Vernon PD and PCC College, and then also Alhambra. Like they just said, we broke the record for the category, and then also the total time of 15 hours and 26 minutes. And again, what it does is, this is on our own time, you know, we train on our own, we have the support of the community getting donations, and it's to build camaraderie, and this year, like I said, we honored Matt Ortiz for that run. So I'd just like to just give a couple shout outs to our community partners who helped make this happen, just to name a few, Envision Motors in West Covina, Protein Lab, Anita Snack Foods, The Cove in West Covina, Car Coat and Walnut, OC Protection, Penske in Ontario, Ricardo Rosales from State Farm, a local resident here, We Win, Ruben Acosta Tree Services, SSA House, Reynolds Buick, Mark Benavides, and so much more. And it's kind of cool, because not only are those businesses and individuals sponsoring us are from West Covina, they're from all over the place. And like I said, it's just to build camaraderie and to support, you know, the department, you know, getting the opportunity to go to Vegas and support one another. The chief was one of our drivers, and it's just a great community event that, you know, we'd like to hopefully continue our first place win with that, so, thank you.
All right, fantastic. Now, I believe we have, we have a video, and again, you prove that the East San Gabriel Valley definitely has the better athletes than that West SGV, so if we can go ahead All right. On behalf of the city of West Covina, recognition to our Baker to Vegas team, great job. You look good with that trophy, you look good with that trophy right here. All right, now for our city manager's report, which will be given by our acting city manager, Paulina Morales.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On the agenda tonight, you have a couple consent items regarding requests for proposals. I know that we've been working towards some dog improvement, sorry, dump, dog park improvements at Del Norte, and on the consent calendar is, we're rejecting the proposals, and I just wanted to reassure the community that we are not shelving this project because we do not want to move forward with the dog improvement. We are putting it on hold, or we have to reject the bid because the bid is only active for so long, and we don't want to move forward with investing in the park when we know that the school district is going to be selling the purple area right south of it, and so we want to hold off and see where, what's going to happen with the development of the school site, and go from there and develop a better plan on how to address not only the dog park area, but also Del Norte Park as well. We are moving forward with a porta play, or the surfacing of the playground, as we do need to replace that, but I just wanted to reassure residents that we are still going to be moving forward with the dog park improvements, just at this time, we're holding to better assess what that would look like with the development on the south side of the park. Also, wanted to provide some updates on some of the good work that our Public Services staff has been doing throughout the community. I know one of the comments at the last meeting was addressing kind of the blighted lot next to Cameron, so our staff has gone and knocked out the weeds, and we are going to be moving forward with possibly reseating it or looking at how we're going to incorporate it into the park on a permanent basis. Our staff has also been undergoing some training for asphalt and road repair, they are not going to be doing our pavement management program repairs, but these are smaller repairs that can help towards fixing potholes, which, you know, we get a lot of those claims through the city, so this is to help address those claims that come in and be more proactive. that come in and be more proactive. We are continuing with the hillside maintenance on the, in the landscape maintenance district. So we've added Saturday. So in the meantime, to help address those areas that have been much deferred for many years. Another area that our staff has been focusing on is addressing the encampment that happens or occurs under the Barranca Bridge. I don't know if anyone's familiar with that. Throughout the last couple of years, it's been an ongoing issue, and we've tried to address it in different ways and manners. The bridge is owned by the city, and it's over the county wash. So there is some collaboration that is occurring to help address it, both from the city side and the county side. The city has, as you can see up in the photos, reinforced, or put rebar through the block wall to help reinforce it. The county replaced the fencing from chain link fencing to smaller fencing, so you can't climb up it. It has since been cut, so they are able to climb the fence. So we're still working with the county. And then there's an area over the wash itself that the city cannot access or barricade because it's over the wash. So that's the collaboration that we're going to be moving forward with the county to help address and block that area off. One of the other things that we are going to be launching in conjunction with Small Business Week is our West Covina Chamber. We are going to be starting to recruit memberships for the chamber at that event. So if any small business is interested in learning more about the West Covina Chamber and what are the benefits that we're going to be providing and the membership fees, we encourage you to come to Small Business Week Thursday, May 2nd, to the event, and we'll be able to provide all that information. Which, as I mentioned, Small Business Week, Thursday, May 2nd. We hope to see our small business community come. This is really an event to show appreciation and support, and to help them grow within our community. We have a couple upcoming events, Earth Day and Arbor Day, April 27th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at West Covina Civic Center. And then, as I just mentioned, West Covina Small Business Week. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you so much. We will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called to speak. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Mayor, this evening, we have 31 speaker slips.
Okay, in the interest of time, I would like to set the speaking time to three minutes. Do you have consensus? Okay, so we'll have three minutes. Assistant City Clerk?
Thank you.
Before we begin, again, during public comment, if we can make sure there's no conversations in the crowd, it makes it very difficult for us here on the dais to hear. So we'll go ahead and start.
Our first speaker is John Schumaker, followed by Sam Mercado, followed by Lizette Trujillo.
Go through a couple items fairly quick. Traffic light on, I believe it's Cameron Citrus. Traffic light nobody wants, except Tony Wu. Except we're ignoring the place where we need a traffic light, or a change to it, on Amar and Westport, I believe it is. But we have money for the one nobody wants, and we don't have money for the one everybody wants. Again, the priorities. Amazing, you give out a piece of paper and say how much we love small businesses. You got $20 million, and the law that put that $20 million into effect said, "Help your residents and help your businesses." This city did zero, zero, to help residents and businesses. Another reason that that man needs to go. Our city manager, or temporary city manager. Right now, Councilmember Diaz and her husband are probably your best friend. Because if you don't get the job, you can sue them for the harassment that the husband has put out on public that she supports. She knows about it, and she's okay with it. So, you know, I might say you ought to sue for a few million dollars and go sit on a beach somewhere or start your own city. You won't have to worry about putting up with these people. 99 and under. I thought that was kind of interesting. I thought we had 100. Well, at least we had 120 in 2016, 2018, 2020, 2022. So, you know, but you're all for public safety. Too bad you don't get any more people doing it. And the last item is, at the last meeting, our mayor was called anti-Semitic. This coming from the individual who has said things like, "Jewish people want to be white." "Jewish people want to be white." You know, there was a guy in the 20s and 30s and 40s who ran around with a funny little mustache that did not think if you were Jewish, you were some sort of subhuman. Doesn't that sound a little bit like it? If you're Jewish, you want to be white. That's absolutely amazing. Coming from a council member's spouse is absolutely unbelievable. And she sits there and smiles and does everything about it. Could I please have my time back since I'm being interrupted by the council members?
Can we pause the time? Again, I know there are probably going to be some things said today that may cause us to have an emotional reaction, but we need to be able to hold ourselves. So that's the warning. Can we have the gentleman in the red hat removed? Thank you.
By the way, for the listening audience, that is Councilmember Diaz's husband.
Let's take a break. Okay, we're going to resume the meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Schumaker.
I must drive him absolutely crazy because not only am I Hispanic Native American, but I'm also part Jewish and part Arab. So I must really drive him crazy. But I don't understand why somebody who's told to get out by the mayor isn't out of this building. You know, special treatment, I guess, if you're married to one of the council members.
Sam Mercado, followed by Leslie Trujillo, followed by Levi Ellie.
Good evening, council members, and to the community members who are gathered here this evening. I would like to discuss and bring forth something that is not on the agenda, something that was being denied on the, being on the agenda when brought up by Mayor Calderon. I'm speaking of the ceasefire resolution in Palestine. To be completely honest, this has been long overdue. We are now approaching the end of the six-month-long bombing of the Gaza Strip in Palestine. That's 192 days of nonstop bombing. I don't think we can fully comprehend the amount of violence and torture that is being inflicted upon the children, women, men, trans, elderly, disabled people of Palestine. Not only are they being tormented by continuous bombing, they are also being starved to death. They are in dire need of medical assistance, food, humanitarian aid, and while this is all being funded through our tax dollars. Meanwhile, in the United States, we are struggling to house our residents. We are struggling with access to basic health care, quality education, affordable housing, a livable wage, and the prison industrial complex. Every day we wait to pass a ceasefire in Palestine, we are killing over 100 Palestinians. There is blood on our hands. Let us not wait any longer. End the occupation, land back, free Palestine, and free all oppressed people of the world. We are not free until we are all free. Thank you for your time.
Can you confirm your name for me? Sam, thank you. Leslie Trujillo, followed by Levi Ellie, followed by Christian Sanchez.
Hello, City Council of West Covina. My name is Lizette Trujillo, and I'm a senior at Apolly High School, working on my final project to increase the number of registered donors, such as organ, tissue, eye, and bone marrow donors. I'm here today to pitch for an educational program on the bone marrow donor topic that will eventually lead to the recruitment of more donors. This will not only help with my goal within the city, but also make the topic of bone marrow donors more known and spread awareness. With around 18,000 patients being diagnosed with a form of cancer disease each year, bone marrow donors are always needed to save the lives of children and adults. Here, I brought a petition with signatures from residents of West Covina and a few surrounding areas. And while my signature goal has not been met, I wish to have, I wish to brought interests within this program to you, and hope to fulfill this goal of mine at a later date. Thank you so much for your time.
Levi Ellie, followed by Christian Sanchez, followed by Peter Davis.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. My name is Ellie Levy. I am a Israeli citizen by birth, religious imputation, and upbringing. I am a United States citizen by way of naturalization. But because both of my countries of nationality seem to have a penchant, indeed a legacy, for criminality, terror, perpetual warfare, and lest we forget genocide, I am too disgusted to come in front of you today as either an Israeli or as an American. Instead, I appear in front of you today as a Palestinian. A Palestinian, not by circumstance attended to his birth or upbringing, but definitely a Palestinian in heart, undeniably a Palestinian in kindred spirit. I am no less of a Palestinian as well because I'm driven by the unassailable moral conviction that many of us in this room share, namely, that the collective Palestinian should and will be soon finally set free. So I ask the City of West Covina to join the ranks of its neighboring municipalities, to faithfully espouse the mores of the community it purports to represent, and to advance a way overdue, way overdue, way overdue resolution for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Palestine. Thank you.
Christian Sanchez, followed by Peter Davis, followed by John Shutt.
Hello, my name is Christian. I come today as a lifelong resident of West Covina. I'm sure this situation needs no more explanation than what many of us here have a ready voice in this room. But to keep the facts short, the apartheid state of Israel has inflicted unimaginable war crimes on millions of innocents resulting in a hostage situation involving thousands of Palestinians, as well as hundreds of Israelis. And now, recent escalations have brought the world to the brink of World War III. I'm sure it's clear to everyone that this is a matter that affects all of us in this room here today. And if that is not reason enough for it to appeal to local politicians, then I'd also like to highlight that this same ceasefire resolution has already been passed in our neighboring city of La Puente, as well as Pasadena, Long Beach, City of Bell, Omona, El Monte, the list goes on. Yet some members on this council may still find it controversial to make a statement that would symbolize our city's appreciation and respect for life, liberty, and justice for all people, the very same values stated on the Pledge of Allegiance. We, the people of West Covina, choose to stand on the right side of history, to abide by a moral code, to adhere to the values that founded this country. The same values that we recite in this country's Pledge of Allegiance are the same values that a ceasefire resolution encompasses. For this reason, we stand here to push our unwavering support for de-escalation, an end to the violence, an immediate end to the genocide, a return to all the hostages through the means of a permanent ceasefire. We stand here hopeful that you, our elected officials, are capable of reflecting our determination through your actions. We stand here hopeful that this council avoids taking such a controversial position as staying silent in the face of a third world war. We stand here hopeful that our elected officials stay true to America and the patriotism you put on display before all of us and prioritize the best interests of the American people above foreign interests. Agenda is a ceasefire resolution. Six months of silence is deafening and only grows louder the longer you wait. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Peter Davis, and I'm here on something a little less pressing than the last few speakers. I'm concerned with the Cameron and Citrus traffic light situation. I live at the first driveway west, no, east of Citrus. And right turns being made from Citrus, they don't have time to stop if I'm pulling out of the driveway. The diet map that was included in the proposal, it's not clear to me what some of the markings mean. It does, which I appreciate, push the traffic beyond, to the end of my house, to the end of my property, which looks good. I prefer it to the ones with the traffic light, but, you know, even either way, as long as the diet part's included. I would like to know if we're going to be able to park in front of my house. It's not clear on the little display that was made in the diagram. So I'm hoping something can be done about that and let us know more details on it. Anyway, I appreciate you guys for your committee and whatever, to consider that. The other thing is, I'm a little concerned that this second row here didn't stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. And they're asking us to act as Americans to do something different. And if they're Americans, you know, they should show respect for our country. So I thought I'd add that.
Hello, and can you, again, if we cannot have comments, thank you. Say hello to the Honorable City Council. I've lived with my family on the corner of Citrus and Cameron since 1998. And through this period of time, we've seen a big change in that area. And the largest one is lack of traffic enforcement for the four-way stop that's there. And before I even present my information, if you can't enforce the four-way stop, how are you ever going to enforce a traffic signal? And what that does is creates an accident at a higher speed. Because now, when the light's green, people cross unimpeded between 35 and 45 miles an hour going north and south. Going east and west, they go through there closer to 55, 60 miles an hour. And people speed up for stale yellows, try to beat the red. I investigated accidents at UPS. I've worked there 37 years. And the worst in form of injury accidents and also financial exposure were all stale yellows at traffic-lit intersections. So I don't see any safety advantage at all. And my wife found this on the internet. And it says that, interestingly, there are experts who claim that traffic signals actually increase the danger at intersections. By the way, all we've asked for through this whole thing as a community is traffic calming measures in that area, which have not happened. Interestingly, traffic signals increase the danger, again. And that four-way stops should be used when possible. And the reason is that stop signs decrease the speed at the intersection. So we have a situation that exists now that if enforced, would work fine. And if you don't enforce a signal, it's not going to be any better than what's there now, except the transgressions will be at a higher speed, exposing people to much more significant danger. Stop signs slow traffic, signals speed traffic. Stop signs slow traffic, signals speed traffic. The last thing is, the first thing, that lack of enforcement is the true problem. I've been to meetings of the Traffic Committee, I've been on this traffic light thing for almost five years now. This is my second time in front of the City Council. I was told by the, your traffic group, that the signal issue was dead, and the very next meeting, it's not, and we're here again. But we that live in the area don't want the signal, we don't want it, we don't want it, we don't want it.
Thank you.
I have two Zanes. I have Mr. Zain Hassan and Zain, so this is not, is it the same individual?
No.
Both named Zain?
No.
Understood, thank you. Huda, Zain, followed by Alejandra. Okay, I'll take Zain, followed by Alejandra. I start the speaker as soon as the name is called.
Understood. Can we reset it to three minutes? Thank you.
Are you telling them to get ahead?
Just before, before you start, we, if, once we announce the names, then they should be up there. So can you announce the people who should be up there so that way we don't have the issue again?
Sure, I have Zain, followed by Huda, followed by Alejandra.
Good evening, Council. My name is Zain, and I work, my work, my, most of my customers, I work as a biomedical engineer, and most of my customers are in West Covina, so this is something that I want to express as someone who's very closely involved with the city, that there has been a, I'm sorry, we recently lost some of our very close friends, my wife's side of the family in Gaza, and, and, and I know you guys really can't do anything, you guys are just council, and you mostly, mostly take care of the, of the, you know, the municipality issues, but I do understand that you guys are only representatives that we can directly approach. We have tried calling the senators, we've tried calling the congresspeople, but it just doesn't seem to, you know, make any effect. But when you, if you guys, I'm sure if you guys at least put a, put a resolution on agenda for a ceasefire, at least you would find out what your constituents wants, and that would be something that you can just pass on to, to the, to the next level, to the, either the Senate or, or, you know, the Congress, the US Congress. And I'm sure, like, I saw some of your profiles, like, I know this council member, Diaz, she's an animal lover, council member, can, all the, I mean, his, his story is very inspiring. I was watching how he works with the people with disabilities, his whole family, like, God bless him. Like, I'm sure Mayor Protem Tony, you're a successful businessman, and the aesthetic, a successful businessman, and I'm sure you, you want to work with improving the, the condition of the city, but what good is the aesthetic condition of the city if your constituents are suffering? The mental health, well-being? Imagine we have the most beautiful city, but the people are sick. So I would just urge all of you to please consider putting it on the agenda and let your constituents, you know, speak up and decide, and hope, I'm sure you would find out the will of the people, and as you are the representative, you must represent us, even though somebody may not vote for you, but please do consider that. Thank you.
Huda, followed by Alejandra, followed by Zain.
I don't really have a speech ready, but I just wanted to come here and say that I think a ceasefire is the most neutral thing that you can call for. It means it's always bilateral, and it means just stopping and calling for peace. And so I think, you know, this is the most humane thing that you could do, and really, I don't think it means that you're taking anyone's side. It just means that we want all the bombing to stop, we want people to begin to get aid and just basic human, you know, human necessities to be met. And so that's all I really want to say, please do consider this. You have no idea how much we, as citizens here, are, I mean, I don't want to say suffering, but we are having sleepless nights and just really, I feel like I'm a zombie here, because it just doesn't feel right to continue with regular life when you know there are kids who are starving, dying, horrible diseases that they're getting just from all the chemicals that are being used against them, and then just, it's just horrible if, and you don't really have to be, you know, like a political person to know that this is wrong, this is, this shouldn't happen. And so I please implore you to consider a ceasefire resolution to be passed, because this is important considering our tax dollars are being used in this genocide and ethnic cleansing, and we feel very responsible. And I feel this is the least that we can do, honestly. So please, I implore you to please consider this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alejandra, and the reason why I came is I was tired from work, you know, getting ready to unwind, watch my comfort shows, and then I remembered one comfort show, which, I mean, I hope you guys have seen it, but now I don't hope you've seen it. It's called My Crazy Ex-Girlfriend, and they reference, you know, the city of West Covina, and I'm glad that Zain brought up the topic of aesthetics. So yeah, you know, West Covina's gone Hollywood, I guess you could say. And, yeah, and season one, episode eight, I had to turn it off right away because I was like, oh heck no, Israeli propaganda, because the crazy ex-girlfriend mentions, you know, that her, the law firm that she works, something, I forget, but she mentions Israel, and I was like, off. So, you know, Americans are very asleep, we get home tired from work because of, you know, the white supremacist government that we live under, we have to work, we can't, you know, go a day without working, otherwise we will be homeless. Yeah, and so another point I wanted to bring up was I'm totally in support of a ceasefire resolution being brought up. And, you know, Palestine is a disability issue. Just this morning, I saw a child with Down Syndrome that was shocked, and, what's the word? You know, he has a lot of trauma from what he's going through. Luckily, he got out, but there's so many other people that, you know, were born with disabilities that are stuck there, and then there's a lot of people that are being disabled by the Israeli and American government. And just, you know, something that I want to bring up is, yeah, I grew up in, you know, the area. I grew up in a Latino household and, you know, colonialism and stuff, growing up under that, I grew up with some really problematic beliefs. I went to school, Cal Poly Pomona, learned some facts that made me question my beliefs. So I just want to say, you know, I don't think cops keep us safe. Forty percent of police are domestic abusers, and another way to tie it into disability rights is Ryan Gaynor, who was an autistic boy who was just shot by the cops in San Bernardino. The history books will not treat the blue line flag nicely. It will definitely be, you know, a hate symbol in the future, not right now. I mean, right now, yeah, but in the future, because after all, the police were founded on enslaved people catching. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Zain Hassan, followed by Nazl, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, Council Members. My name is Isa Zain, and I'm seven years old. I want to tell you about the new things I've learned since October 7th. I learned that some adults around me don't like children like me. When my family and I were standing with, when my family and I, including my three-year-old sister and one-year-old brother, we were standing to the Palestinian flag, chanting, "Free, free Palestine!" An angry man in his truck smoked his wheel on us, leaving us with black smoke on our faces. I learned a new hand gesture which my mom said I should never use, from the adults who didn't like us saying, "Killing children is a crime." One of the most interesting things I've learned, that unlike the storybooks I read, there are some people in this world who are neither villains nor heroes. There are people who don't stand up for justice and choose to remain silent. Please don't let that be you, dear Council Members. Please call for ceasefire for the children of Gaza. Free Palestine!
Nazl, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Caitlin Oi.
Did you say Nazli? I wasn't sure.
Nazli, sorry, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I am a physician practicing at Queen of the Valley, and I, as such, I must reaffirm some of the statements from some of the other people here regarding the loss of life in the Middle East and the necessity for our community to at least consider making a statement, agendizing a ceasefire resolution. We do, through our taxpayer dollars, contribute to this warfare, and that is why we are seeing again and again, meeting after meeting, so many people coming up and speaking on this subject. I think that at this point, what we are asking for, the City Council, is to consider it, to put it on the agenda. Granted, you may need more time to look into it, to consider it, to weigh it. This is not the day that you will necessarily approve it, please consider that this is the day that hopefully you will agendize it. All we are looking for is for you to do that much today. When was the time to agendize it? Was it on October 17th, when the Al Ali Hospital was, was attacked? Was it in November, the first time that the Al Shifa Hospital was attacked? Was it February 25th, when Aaron Bushnell immolated himself? When was the time to agendize this? And I don't want to get into any, anything with other people in the community here, but I must address the comment about the people in this row not standing up for the, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I love this country, I was born in this country, and, you know, I even heard the comment made that maybe they weren't born here, maybe they're from a different country. To me, what the American ideal is, is the enterprising entrepreneurship, it's ingenuity, innovation, it's freedom of thought, and right now, free thought, free speech is being suppressed. What we're seeing is ingenuity in the form of tech is used for data farming, data farming of our information, and that data farming is used to surveilance us, to dox us, to further silence us. These is, this is not American ideal, and perhaps maybe, I don't know why they didn't stand up, I didn't stand up because my knee is busted, but maybe that is why they didn't stand up. So I don't think that any of us should basically stereotype or assume anything about anybody else. We all have reasons, and we all want this country to be truly what it stands for. I don't want this country that I love, that I was born in, to throw its ideals under the bus for supporting a genocidal regime, and that is what we're doing. So, number one, we do need to agendize the ceasefire resolution, because it is important, because you've seen us come, meeting after meeting, and we will not stop. It is weighty, it is important, and at some point, the only way to end this is we're going to all have to get a little bit uncomfortable, and the day will come that the ceasefire will be the easiest thing we could have done for this.
R. Robinson, followed by Caitlin Oi, followed by Melissa Lopez.
We hold these truths to be self-evident. This list I'm giving is inspired by James Rogusky Substack. Public interests have conspired against a thriving American middle class and a Gaza ceasefire. Men cannot give birth, rather, all men are created equal with certain unalienable rights. America has devolved into a uniparty, a monopoly of corrupt politicians pitted against we the people. By oath, constitutional sheriffs answer only to the people. The CSPOA will meet tomorrow in Las Vegas on Sierra Avenue. Get your $49 tickets, quick. A monopoly of corrupt politicians have revolving doors. Politicians receive campaign donations, and both they and government bureaucrats are often offered positions in a matrix of corporate overlords as a reward for ignoring public interests while in office. Legalized bribery. Functional First Amendment, independent media no longer exist. Media is bought propaganda controlled by advertisers. The trusted news initiative, legacy news conglomerates, is a conspiracy which receives enormous amounts of revenue, ad revenue from pharma. Total control of media, quote, "news," content is exchanged for independence. Antitrust monopoly laws be damned. The scientific method requires open discussion and debate and invites challenges to accepted beliefs. The COVID-19 concept of trusting the science assists pseudoscience and violates the scientific method. Denigration of truth by psych ops, false flags, and propaganda referring to it as miss, dis, or malinformation, and the censorship of those who are merely seeking to expose the truth or express their opinion is a clear violation of one's unalienable rights. Strategic lawsuits, called slap suits, are common tools to repress our guaranteed free speech rights contrary to public participation. The COVID-19 vaccines were rushed into use based on fraudulent clinical trials or no trials. They are unsafe and ineffective, they are not vaccines, but CRISPR-Cas9 gene editing experiments. They are bioweapons, dangerous kill shots, and must be banned immediately. I call for the COVID-19 shots to be banned. There's a court case-
Thank you, Bill.
-Florida-
Thank you, Bill.
-which is, which is examining the evidence right now.
Caitlin Oi, followed by Melissa Lopez, followed by Cece.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Caitlin. I was a proud San Jose shark and a West Covina bulldog, and before I talk about what I was here to talk about, I do admit, I'm one of those people that are really guilty of flying down Citrus and Cameron on my way to school at Cal Poly, and something probably should be done about that, because I have gone way past the speed limit over there. But a streetlight is probably not the answer, especially because there's a lot of schools in the area, and that would probably contribute to the traffic problem even more. But what I'm here to talk about is asking the City Council to add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda. I thank Mayor Calderon Tabatai for trying to put it forward on the City Council agenda last week, and I'm sorry that it didn't go through. But issues like this do affect us locally, and one of those ways that it affects us locally is that the tax dollars that the city sends to the federal- is that the tax dollars that the city sends to the federal government is used, is used and some of that goes towards funding Israel's campaign against the Palestinians. The amount that West Covina sends to the government that is used to fund Israel's bombardment of Palestinians is estimated to be about $1,161,725. Although some of that money could instead go to 138 households with public housing for a year, 404 children receiving free or low-cost housing, 12 elementary school teachers, or even funding our own fire department that has been going through it in the last year. So there's a lot of things that that money could be used for instead and it's a tragedy that we use it to kill innocent people. So, you know, these issues are a lot more local than you think. There are a lot of people here that are affected by it and I hope that the City Council can put it forward on the agenda.
Melissa Lopez, followed by Cece, followed by Audrey Miller.
Thank you, Council, for being here tonight. I realize how tiring it must be to be here at the end of the day and that goes even more so for everyone behind me. Everyone behind me, you see, are a group of people who all stand for the same thing. People who took time out of school, life, and just being tired just to be here tonight to ensure what I'm about to say. We here, we implore you to install a ceasefire resolution here tonight since it has been over six months since Israel has ruthlessly bombed hospitals, schools, refugee camps, and the situation has only gotten worse. Kind of reiterating what she says, the US sends millions upon millions to Israel, like, all the time, whereas people like, at least me and my family, I'm a daughter of an immigrant from El Salvador, we struggle every day. A lot of times, we don't go to the hospital because we don't know how we're going to afford healthcare, we don't know where the groceries are. And then I learned that this money, instead of being put towards the people that you guys allegedly represent, it's being sent to kill other kids across the world. So I realize that it is a local matter and then this may be above your pay grade than what you assign for it, but realistically, this includes every single one of us here. Yeah, so basically, we have been here after six months. Everyone here will, are not going to stop coming here and I want you to remember that when time comes for election. We have been here and will continue to be here unless you do the right thing and install a ceasefire resolution, which is the bare minimum, may I say. Basically, you as a side, you as council members decided to represent the people and since you represent the people, we as the people implore you to denounce the genocides going on in Palestine as well as, yeah, pass the ceasefire, sorry. And I promise you that what you do today will stay for you for the rest of your lives and the people will remember and we refuse to let you forget. Free Palestine, thank you.
Cece, followed by Audrey Miller, followed by Dan Miller.
Hi, good evening. So I don't really have a speech either. I'm just here tonight just to support the people behind me who I think probably have a lot more of a validity in what they have to say for Palestine. But I also implore you to support it because as we've, this has been said multiple times. It's been six months of genocide and I don't understand, time after time, how this becomes a debate amongst people and how this is a political issue when it's very clearly a humanitarian issue. At a very young age, I started considering the repercussions of environmentalism and the things that are going to, I personally, I'm going to have to try and solve throughout my lifetime in order to just exist, to have access to food and water. And I see that on the cutting board are people like people in Palestine for the kind of lifestyle that is upheld here in the Western world. And I think that it's, because of that sole fact, it is my problem and it is an issue and a responsibility of the people in my community to stand up for all oppressed people around the world because they're freeing us and they will be freeing soon as well because we will continue to come here. So yes, please, at least agendize it and start talking about this as a public. Thank you.
Audrey Miller, followed by Dan Miller, followed by Philip G.
Hello, I'm Audrey Miller. I live one block west of Citrus, off of Cameron. We, we in our household are in favor of the signal. We didn't even know it was an item on the City Council's agenda years ago, mainly due to the fact that when you send out the notices, it's only a 500-foot radius. And ironically, we only, we live on a four-house cul-de-sac. The people on the east side got the notice. Us living on the west side did not and we live on the same street. So I think the 500-foot radius maybe should be increased for, in the future, for things like this. And I imagine that would go, be the same for the people across Cameron on the south side. We live on the north side. Probably that whole half of the street didn't get the notice either and that's, there's a lot of houses going on the south side. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out, first of all. We feel that the intersection is unsafe, not only for vehicles, but for pedestrians as well. The main thing to me is that people don't know when it's their turn. It's, it's eight lanes, it's a four-way stop and people don't know when it's their, their turn to go or who should turn or go straight or whatever. Most of, in the data, most of the accidents that happen there are broadside accidents and, and then there are also a few rear, rear-end accidents. I think a signal would help to improve the flow of traffic by letting people know when it's their turn to go and especially if you have a, you know, an actual left, left turn lane signal as well. Not just, you know, red, yellow and green lights, but turn, left, left turn lanes as well. I wasn't really going to get up here and say a whole lot, but there is a new assembly bill that went into effect the beginning of this year. It's Bill 413 and it creates a buffer zone of 20 feet from crosswalks, meaning that cars and trucks cannot park where they might block the view of both pedestrians and drivers. So clearly, the state is recognizing that that's an issue as well. And as far as, one more thing, the gentleman that said, "Nobody wants this signal", we want it, some of us want it, some of us do, some of us do, some of us do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Miller, followed by Philip G., followed by Shannon Volk.
Evening, council members. I know it doesn't look like I walk my dog, but I do every day. But the last time I was here was about 25, 30 years ago and my neighbor and I came here because we were trying to get leaf blowers banned. And so when we showed up, he and I came in and there were about 50 gardeners waiting for us. So we were really outnumbered and we knew we didn't stand a chance. But we did say our piece and we walked home and felt good about it. But anyway, I've been categorized as a nobody because somebody came in and said, "Nobody wants this signal." I've been trying, I've been, I've lived in that area since 1987 and I've seen things change. The reason we bought that house, we love that house, is that it was a walking neighborhood. We used to have a lot of people in that neighborhood that would walk, 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 but not anymore. And also, another thing that popped in my head was somebody said previously that if stop signs were slowing everybody down, wouldn't we be taking the signal lights out of Valenda and Cameron? Clark Allen and Cameron, Azusa and Cameron, Berenka and Cameron, all down the line? We're the only intersection without a signal light. So logic doesn't, it doesn't make logic, logical sense to me. But anyway, we've been at the last two meetings and TransTech has done surveys, data, everything. And I think there's lovely, from what I can read, 40,000 cars going through that intersection daily. And I think now is the time that you have the data, it's the time to just ask the traffic engineer whether a signal light is more valuable at that intersection than it is stop signs. And I think the data will prove that. Thank you, guys.
Philip G., followed by Shannon Volk, followed by Lance Volk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. I'm just over here right there to mention a, an agenda, well, something that's not on the agenda. What do you call, I'm here to, I'm here to ask to, to agendize a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. What do you call, I understand the mayor, the mayor supported it and I'm asking one of the members of the Council right there to please take up the motion. This is something that, this is something a large portion of the community wants. And from January 1st till October 6th last year, over 200 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli state. And this was before, this was the day before October 7th. So, and the reason why I say this is because there is a consistent narrative that this began on October 7th right there. October 7th wasn't the beginning of it. It was a retaliation for what has been going on for decades. What do you call, there was, if anybody has ever heard of the name Rachel Corey, she was an American that visited Gaza in 2002 or 2003, I forget which year, but it was in the early 2000s. Well, she visited Gaza right there, she witnessed many homes being bulldozed and to protect the family who she was staying with at the time, she stood in front of the bulldozer and the bulldozer literally ran her over. Her parents took up the cause and, what do you call that she, and they went, they went over to visit the family whose home she protected and it turns out it's the only home that's on that block that hasn't been bulldozed yet. And in a very sarcastic manner, a bulldozer just happened to pass by while her parents were there. This is the level of just psychopathy that, that they are engaged in and this needs to be, this needs to be stopped. All of this is supported by our tax dollars. Our tax, I do not, I do not pay my taxes, well, we pay our taxes because we have to right there, but I do not pay my taxes right there to fund atrocities in any other country. I pay for, I pay my taxes to provide services to my country. Much-needed services like healthcare that we do not have, universal healthcare, what do you call, higher education, both at the university level and for vocational training for the trades. We do not have that. Israel, Israel has that and it's largely subsidized by our tax dollars, but we do not have that ourselves. Bridges are either collapsing right there or just falling apart. There's friggin' potholes everywhere. We have a homeless, we have a homeless and drug epidemic everywhere right there. Everybody seems to literally just not have any solution to any of this. What do you call, and honestly, right there, the first thing we need to do is call for a ceasefire resolution in Gaza, right there. What do you call, and not just a ceasefire in Gaza, but also a ceasefire for the, in the West Bank. Right there, the West Bank is currently being assaulted by illegal settlers who are being armed by the Israeli state and they are not being, and they are not being talked about because the media is focused solely on Gaza. And if we do not do this right there, this is going to become a regional war as we have seen lately, right there. What do you call, the, the Israeli state right there attacked an Iranian consulate and Iran is retaliating and this is getting out of hand. Ceasefire now.
Shannon Volk, followed by Lance Volk, followed by Abraham Stern.
Mayor, council members. This is in regards to the light over on Cameron and Citrus. The concern is that there will likely be fatality over there if you put that light in. Like, there already has been a fatality over on, up the street on Hollenbeck Inn and Cameron and there's been one further south, or rather east, over on, at the high school, on Berenka and Cameron. It's already happened. As far as we know, there has not been a single fatality on Cameron and Citrus. There's been a lot of fender benders, but they're at slow speeds. I live just two doors down from that intersection. When accidents happen, you know, we come out to the street and see what occurred. I can't even remember one time where someone's been taken away even in an ambulance. Ambulance has shown up, they have examined people, but so far, as far as I can tell, in the experiences we have had, no one's been hauled off in an ambulance, much less a fatality. If that light's put on, if it's put in there, there will likely be, be a fatality. In fact, over time, I can almost guarantee it. So I just really like to, like you to consider that. By putting a light there will likely cause a death. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Lance Volk, followed by Abraham, followed by Selena H.
My name is Lance Volk and I live two doors down from, on Cameron, from Citrus. And I've been, I've been living there for 35 years. I've seen a lot. My kitchen window sits there and I throw out my kitchen window on right to this day. In fact, this morning, I was curious, so I counted the cars. At 8 o'clock, traffic started building up. At 8:35, it was gone. Came back again at 3:15. Why? School. 3:15, school and people getting out of work. And then it's clear. Weekends, crickets. At night, crickets. So putting a light in there, it's going to get somebody killed. Up on the high, by the high school, there has been, since I've lived there, there's been four fatalities. And I'm not sure, but I think we just had one not too long ago because usually the flowers show up and somebody dies and there was flowers there. Now, when these lights go in, you're going to paint the, the curbs red. I have no driveway, neither do any of my neighbors. We have access, we have to get to the front of our, my house will be down the street, walk all the way to my house to go in my house. The alley in the back, you stick your nose out and you're going to get the front of your car taken off. I have bus drivers looking in his rearview mirror, up Citrus. Let me know I can enter the traffic. Now, I know that, that people want to travel through there quickly. But I'm telling you, Mr. Wu can probably testify to this. He was T-boned. Is this not correct? Right, at Cortez. And my conversation at that time, when he told me that, I had told him that. Mr. Wu, I go, "If you had a light there and it had turned yellow, that person might have stepped on the gas and T-boned you at 60." Mr. Wu said nothing. As the lights went in up on Citrus and the high school, they didn't put them in on ours and they didn't put it on the one here where he got T-boned. Good thing. So one of the biggest problems we have is the speed limit got raised. I was there when it was 40 miles an hour. When they raised it to 45, it really got bad. But the, but the police will not give you a tick unless you're at least 10 miles over the speed limit. I know a few officers. And they're saying the speed's no problem. Well, tell that to the Highway Patrol. They advertise it.
Thank you.
Speed kills.
Thank you.
That's what's gonna happen. I just hope it's not my loved ones get killed.
Thank you.
Abraham, followed by Selena--
Yes, sir.
Abraham, followed by Selena, followed by Kenneth.
Good evening, West Covina. My name is Avraham. I'm a Jewish American with roots through Israel and I demand you adopt and agendize a ceasefire resolution. The Israeli government is not on a rescue mission. They are in Gaza to restore illegal settlement. They are there to kill as many Palestinians as possible and they are there to erase civilian infrastructure. A plan for the total ethnic cleansing of over 2 million Palestinians for Gaza is underway with the assistance of US taxpayer funds. It is disgraceful, it is the antithesis of Jewish values and it must stop. In addition, there is evidence for the construction of a gas extraction operation. The Western empire always goes to war for fossil fuels. We can all see what's happening and we are tired of our intelligence being assaulted. Israel does not speak for all Jews or Israelis. Many of the most outspoken demands for ceasefire include family members of hostages and victims of October 7th. They demand ceasefire. It should be noted that many of the released hostages stated that they feared while in captivity, Israel's bombs more than their captors. Again, it is wildly absurd and disingenuous, given the scale of the bombardment, that anyone can make the case, this is a rescue mission. We always hear of Israel's right to defense and Israel's right to exist. What about Palestinians' rights? Are they not allowed to defend themselves? Do they not have a right to exist? Regarding the environment, the tons of explosives already dropped on Gaza dwarfed the Hiroshima and Nagasaki bombs multiple times over. This is absolutely accelerating climate change, which will affect West Covina. Every few weeks, Israel's campaign represents another atomic bomb. It is not sustainable and for this alone, America must stop arming Israel immediately. In December, Israel killed three hostages attempting to be rescued. They held up a white flag and called out to be rescued in Hebrew. Israel still gunned them down. Israel still gunned them down. In fact, Israel has knowingly dropped bombs on buildings it knew hostages were held. This is not a rescue mission. The longer the siege of Gaza continues, the worse Islamophobia, anti-Palestinian hatred, and antisemitism rage in America, in our local communities. It is inescapable. Violence is finding our community, right here in West Covina. This is a city matter. A ceasefire will go a long way to ease tensions. As Americans, we fund the Israeli military, we have the power and the moral obligation to do something to stop the, stop the slaughter of Gaza, or we are complicit. Two out of every three Americans say ceasefire. We are not, not dividing the public. You are dividing the public by refusing to call for a ceasefire. Our congressional reps ignore us. Therefore, you must be the voice of the people. The Israeli government has lied about the details of October 7th, and they're lying about UNRWA, and they do this to justify genocide. Because of Israel's lies, we've cut off Palestinians and are starving them to death while they're being bombed, contributing to genocide. It is sickening. You must demand the Biden administration restore UNRWA immediately. In addition to the genocide of Palestine, Israel bombs Lebanon, Syria, and Iranian consulate, inviting retaliation and seeking greater U.S. involvement, hurling assault towards global war. Is that not a concern for West Covina? I call on you not only to adopt a ceasefire resolution, but a full divestment of the city's tax dollars. I'm tired of hearing there's no money for healthcare, education, or upgrades to infrastructure. The money is there, but it's going to Israel's military when it should be spent here at home. I can't think of a more local issue. In 1982, President Reagan shut down Israel's invasion of Lebanon with one phone call. President Biden must now do the same. If you fail to agendize ceasefire and divestment, you are complicit in genocide, environmental destruction, and harm to our community. Save yourself this embarrassment, do the right thing. The community will get the ceasefire resolution. The only question is whether you will pass it yourselves, or whether you will be replaced to get it. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Selena H., followed by Kenneth T., followed by Amy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, West Covina community. My name is Selena, and actually, I spent most of my life in the city of West Covina. I graduated from West Covina High School in 96. I'm dating myself, and raised my older child in the city. So, um, tonight, I come before you as an educator. I teach sociology to college students. I'm a taxpayer, a mother, someone who was raised with Christian values. I went to Bishop Mount Memorial High School. And simply as a human being who deeply values liberty and justice for all people, and I know there was already a mention of, you know, the pledge, and I understand how it can be perceived that it's disrespectful, but I also think it's really disrespectful to not honor something that you hold your heart and pledge allegiance to. And, you know, my 11-year-old is, we're really grappling with being Americans right now because we know that we're supporting a genocide right now, our tax money's supporting a genocide. And we're grappling with that as Americans because he understands what's happening, and he doesn't want to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag right now. And I support that because it's his constitutional right to do so. So, um, you know, it's terrible what we're seeing every day. We're devastated at witnessing, um, you know, an ongoing genocide, ethnic cleansing of our Palestinian brothers and sisters in occupied Palestine and Gaza. I know that many Americans just started paying attention to the conflict on October 7th, but it's really important to understand, and I had to learn this myself, that this started, you know, a, a, much longer, you know, it's been going on for decades, okay? Unfortunately, because of biased media, we don't always see this perspective, right? We, we think it started on October 7th, many of us do, and, and so it makes sense why people are operating off of those misconceptions. But the truth of the matter is that Palestinians have been living under an apartheid regime, under an illegal Israeli occupation for decades. And as Americans, if we say that we do value freedom, and it's one of our most precious values, then we need to honor that and, and show it in our actions. So, we can't just, you know, I, the American government has no issue supporting Ukrainians in their plight for liberation, but with Palestinians, we don't see that happening. We actually see the government supporting the genocide of them. So, we don't want to be complicit in genocide. We are coming before you because our national leadership is failing us, and, um, you know, we're calling on you to be our leaders, to, to stand up for what's morally correct. The American government, they're, they're, they're ignoring the will of the people. 70% of Americans do support a ceasefire. So, please, you know, we're turning to you, and, um, we need a, we need a ceasefire resolution to start ending the genocide that's happening. So, please have the moral courage, please join the other 80-plus cities across the nation that are taking a moral stance. Thank you so much.
Kenneth, followed by Amy, followed by Amina.
Good evening, council members. What we're seeing in Gaza is not an Israel-Hamas war, it is an outright genocide of Palestinians. It did not start on October 7th. It goes back to 1948, when the State of Israel was founded through the expulsion of 750,000 Palestinians. Zionist terror gangs such as the Lehhi, Irgun, and Haagen-Ack limited massacres in Palestinian villages such as Der Yasin, and slaughtered thousands of men, women, and children. These Zionist terror gangs later combined to form what is known as the IDF, and they're still doing the same thing. This is how Israel was founded, as an apartheid state that steals Palestinian homes and land to build Jewish-only settlements. The Israeli government holds thousands of Palestinian men, women, and children as hostages in Israeli prisons indefinitely, without charge or trial. It's called administrative detention, and it's been going on long before October 7th. Israeli politicians are not shy about hiding what they're doing. Benjamin Netanyahu has referred to Palestinians as Amalek, a biblical nation which God had ordered the Israelites to exterminate completely, men, women, and children. Israeli Minister of National Security, Ermar Ben-Gvir, even hung a photo in his, in his office of Baruch Goldstein, an extremist Israeli settler who walked into the Ibrahim Mosque in Hebron in 1994, shot and killed 29 Palestinians and injured 125. Israeli Defense Minister Yoav Galant has referred to Palestinians in Gaza as "human animals." In the past six months, we've seen 40,000 deaths, including 15,000 children. That's more children killed in one small area than in all global conflicts over the past four years. Nothing about this is self-defense. Mr. Ali Kantoos, I know you're a disability rights advocate, and I respect you for this work. These past seven months, we've seen children scarred and maimed beyond belief by Israeli warplanes and bombs and snipers in Gaza. Children with their faces burned off, limbs missing, and other unimaginable injuries. Many of these children have lost their families. I beg you to use your position of power to speak out and advocate for them. Council members Lopez Viado, as well as Mr. Kantoos, I know you're both of Filipino descent. I, myself, am Cambodian. As a Southeast Asian person, I beg you to stand with Palestine. When we protest, we chant from the U.S. to the Philippines, "Stop the U.S. War Machine." Please recognize the ways in which imperialism has impacted both your homelands and the way it continues to impact Palestine. And with that said, there may be some people who come here tonight or in the future who tell you not to advocate for a ceasefire. To not advocate for a ceasefire when all of this is going on is to advocate for genocide. It is complicity, and it is saying that you're okay with the status quo that, and with what is going on. We have to stand against you of imperialism in West Covina, in the Philippines, and in Palestine, and recognize that all of our struggles and issues are interconnected. Please agendize a ceasefire for the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Amy, followed by Amina, followed by Bill Elliott.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ame, and I've been a West Covina resident for all 27 years of my life. Um, I was actually born here at Queen of the Valley Hospital down on Sunset, and I am a proud child of two Filipino immigrant parents, so it's awesome to see Ms. Lopez Viado and Mr. Ali Kantoos here tonight to listen to our voices. I just want to bring up, I went to Orangewood, San Jose, well, used to be called Edison, now it's Charter, Edgewood High School, all here in West Covina. And I remember dearly, uh, because how could I not, uh, we learned about the genocides around the world, not just the Holocaust. I'm talking about East Timor, Rwanda, Bosnia, Darfur, which is ongoing, Armenia, and the native peoples of this land that we stand on today. If this is not an issue for us, why do we learn about genocides? For fun? Is human life just statistics? No, it isn't. If high schoolers and middle schoolers and college students can learn about a genocide and take action, if we working people from all around this place, busy in our own lives, can learn about a genocide and take action, if a seven-year-old child can come up here and learn about a genocide and take action, then this is no excuse for sitting members of a city council with power to not be informed. Uh, let's say for some reason that this last hour, you weren't paying attention, maybe you have some invisible headphones, uh, and if, and let's say you also weren't paying attention to the disturbing imagery coming out of Gaza. Fine, you can educate yourself in, in these, this time that you have to consider a ceasefire resolution. You can read Rashid Khalidi's 100 Years War, 100 Years War on Palestine. You can read the Israeli historian Elon Puppes, The Ethnic Cleansing of Palestine. You can check out the website, decolonizepalestine.com. If you want information about every single day of the past 190-plus days of this recent genocide, check out the electronic Intifada. You have the internet on your phone, so there is absolutely no excuse for ignorance. Like we said before, you have time to deliberate this, and when I am back with my friends in two weeks, I sure hope that you read up on the history of Palestine and the settler colonial occupation. And before we bring them up, we brought them before, I call Congresswoman Napolitano, Senator Padilla, and Senator Butler every day. Their aides are probably tired of hearing my voice, and yet we still see no action. So, we need more and more cities to rise up and boldly call for ceasefires and divestment from the Zionist entity. That is how we bring change. I need my city, where I was born, to stand with humanity and to stand on the right side of history. So, once again, I implore the council, as empathetic human beings with a heart and a soul, it is your political and moral obligation to agendize and call for a resolution for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Palestine.
Amina, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Patricia.
Okay. Hello, my name is Amina Hearnz. I'm born and raised in West Covina, and I'm here to add my voice in asking the city council to agendize a permanent ceasefire resolution and join the growing lists of cities not around just SJV, but around the world. Israel is committing war crime after war crime, with our politicians pouring our tax dollars in the billions to contribute to the devastating effects of 193-day slaughter of more than 34,000 Palestinian people, more than 13,800 children killed by carpet bombing, ongoing famine, and diseases caused by Israeli's occupation displacing more than 1.7 million Palestinians, the torturing of UN workers and Palestinian detainees, and much more graver details that have been coming out long before October 7th. The United States has a legal obligation from the U.S. law and international law to prevent genocide, and the International Court of Justice found that Israel is plausible of committing genocide, and our biased media and governmental officials are signing off on this genocide. And if these findings don't alarm you, or if you believe in the sentiments that this doesn't affect our community, and if this is happening far away from our reach, I ask you to wonder. To wonder if the city of Chicago asked the same after a six-year-old Palestinian-American boy, Wahida El Fami, was murdered being stabbed 26 times for being Palestinian, or Congress and SCOUTs passing numerous of laws and bills to limit our free speech and freedom to protest, or the dozens of college students from Claremont College to Columbia University being arrested and even expelled for peacefully protesting. To believe this doesn't affect our community is absolutely ignorant and political cowardice. This is a moral compass test, and we are failing it. If this were another time, would this sentiment be held if Africans like Nat Turner led their rebellion against slavery? Injustice and violence acts like slavery, slumber colonialism, and concentration camps were legal, but we look back now and know it was wrong? We create land acknowledgements, monuments, and maybe a day will memorialize these acts of violence that we directly created and participated in. I was taught to never allow history to repeat itself and to never stay silent in the face of injustice. We are seeing this injustice today, and leaders like you have the power to join the chorus in agendizing a ceasefire resolution, which is the bare minimum. None of us are free until all of us are free. Free Palestine.
Bill Elliott, followed by Patricia, followed by Jason.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bill Elliott. Regarding the Cameron and Citrus proposed traffic signal, um, I don't live over there in that part of the city, but I drive through it often, and, uh, I think that the cost of putting in a traffic signal there is probably gonna be millions of dollars, if not 10 million. Uh, one signal at Westport was gonna cost a million dollars from what I hear. So, what do we do? Well, when Councilwoman Diaz was running in the 3rd District, one of her campaign, um, issues was putting up the LED-powered blinking stop signs. And, uh, in the last three years, uh, the city has installed, if I'm not mistaken, 105 of those. And they are very effective. They're bright. You can see the one on Merced and Larkellen, almost from Azusa Avenue, blinking. You cannot, they cannot be ignored. And I think it will slow traffic down. I think that would be an excellent option for Cameron and Citrus. And I know it's a dangerous intersection. The biggest problem is people don't understand the rules of the road, and we could talk hours on that subject. You know, 10 years ago, I started speaking here at City Council advocating for concealed carry, Second Amendment. And I talked about how the previous police chiefs were tyrants, and they were ignoring the Constitution. And thank God for the Supreme Court decision, the Bruin decision, which changed all that. And that's why concealed carry permits are now issued in West Covina. You can't just have wholesale denial like West Covina has done since 1978. So, I have a right to defend myself. You pull a knife on me, I have a right to draw my gun and kill you. If you draw a gun on me, I have a right to draw my gun and kill you. If you shoot me or stab me, I have a right to defend myself. Israel has a right to defend herself. Hamas is a terrorist organization, and they control the Palestinian people and have a lot of empathy for the Palestinians. However, when October 7th rolled around and babies were being put in ovens, and babies were being machine-gunned in cribs, and machine-gunned in cribs, where's his warning, you little tyrant? Where's his warning?
Excuse me?
You heard me.
I'm still reporting myself, courtesy to the court.
Thank you.
Patricia, followed by Jason, followed by Lisa Penya.
Wow, okay. Good evening. I'm here to talk about, um, the traffic signal at Cameron and Citrus. I'm here to oppose that traffic installation of, my neighbors and I have been attending, I'm sorry, my neighbors and I have been attending meetings with the Traffic Committee, sorry, I'm too short, uh, community meetings. Uh, we came to the council meeting in December 2019 to, again, voice opposition to the traffic light. Uh, the major problem we have there, and I live on, sorry, uh, Citrus adjacent to Cameron, the major problem we have there is people speeding through Cameron. They're racing down, it's a residential area, and they're racing down that area. Ever since they installed that light on South Hills, by South Hills High School, on Cameron and Baranca, people are flying from Grand Avenue all the way down to make that light. If you install that traffic light, they're gonna keep coming flying, they're gonna be crashing and killing somebody. Installing the traffic installation also affects a lot of our properties. A lot of us who live adjacent to that intersection, there's about six or seven houses where we would get red curves, we would have no parking, traffic would be pushed too closer to our sidewalks, so that's gonna affect our quality of life. Uh, we have a daughter who walks home from South Hills High School, and yes, that intersection is, it's dangerous across, however, cars are stopping right now. With an intersection with the light, it's, it's scary. Kids are running through, you know, a track, people are walking home from school, and with that light, I can just, oh, it'll be an awful, it'd be blood on your hands if you installed that traffic installation and something happens to those kids or any pedestrian in that area. Thank you.
Jason, followed by Lisa Penya, followed by Esma Ali.
Hi there. Um, I live same house as Patricia, uh, Citrus and Cameron, and we're right there, right? It's my neighbors here, and we've been to the previous meeting. And, uh, I agree where on Cameron, I liked some of the, the diet, I guess it was called, some of that on Cameron. It'd be nice to see, maybe see some of that on Citrus, just with paint, you know, a lot can be done with paint. I don't agree with the left turn lane. Uh, it will squish the traffic closer to the curb towards my house on Citrus. Oh, there's a bus stop there. Uh, we'd reduce some of the parking in front of the house. It's my other neighbor who was on Cameron, some of that might reduce the parking in, in his house. We already have the flashing stop signs, and they do help. But I'm a believer of just add more paint, that kind of traffic climate measure. For example, by South Hills High School, coming from Grand, I have a daughter, used to be at South Hills, and now comes home from college, to and from college, goes over, comes back and forth over Grand and down, uh, home to come home, and, um, there isn't much paint that warns you that there was a high school that you're approaching. Uh, there's just not enough signage. Signage would work. Um, also, enforce the rules we already have. We have traffic laws. At one of the last meetings we had, uh, at the senior center, uh, the police officers who were present stated that they don't have patrol at night, or they don't have enough patrol at night. But that's when a lot of the chaos happens, the middle of the night. A lot of the speeding, the race cars. A lot of the speeding, the race cars, it happens. I know they can't control the noise, but we can try to maybe, try to do a better job of enforcing the rules we already have, and maybe use that money to hire more police officers, I guess. I know it's a lot to cover, all the way to the Shadow Hills area, to the South Hills area, all the way, than all the other parts of West Covina. But we are, the people who are mostly against it, live within those four corners. And I'm sorry, it inconveniences some people who live further down the street on the cul-de-sac because they can't turn left or something, but we're the people who live right there. And we walk that neighborhood. We walk up with our kids. We walk up the hill. We're always around. The kids walk to and from school. And we just hope that the money can be better spent wisely on the paint, and maybe more law enforcement, like I was saying. I just think it's a pretty simple matter, and we just don't want to give up our parking. We have a lot of family who have to come to our home. But anyway, I just want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Lisa Peña, followed by Esma Ali, followed by Gloria Angeles.
Hi. My name is Lisa Peña. And I'm here today to ask you all to please add a ceasefire resolution to the next meeting's agenda. The ceasefire resolution is a local city issue for West Covina because West Covina spends $1 million of taxpayers' money to fund these genocidal companies. Therefore, it's a local issue. Additionally, this council cannot use that excuse of being a local issue because this council actually values international affairs. At the last meeting, we heard about the council members vacation overseas and how they wanted to establish sister cities with other countries. And I think that if this council is going to invest and get involved with international affairs, and they could at least recognize this one, that we've been asking for, like, for months now, basically. Additionally, a ceasefire would be for all parties included. So we're calling for no more deaths in general, regardless of race or religion or anything like that. Like, we just want nobody to die, period. So I don't see how that could be used as an excuse. Additionally, this meeting started off by this council talking about Arbor Day and appreciating the environment and all that. But don't you think you should at least speak up for the environment? Because it's not good to have all those bombs exploding. It's not good for the environment, so at least speak up for that, too. Additionally, the bilateral ceasefire would urge the end of murders to aid workers, doctors, children, churches, animals, journalists. So whichever one of those you care for, it would be reason to call for a ceasefire. Additionally, 82 cities across the United States have called for a ceasefire, and 22 of those cities come from California. So hopefully, you could be the next city to call for a ceasefire. And I was very proud to see the mayor call for a ceasefire at the last meeting, especially being from West Covina. So I just hope that another council member seconds his motion. It just takes one, and really, we're just asking for a discussion. Nobody's asking you to sign it tonight or anything like that. We're just asking for it to be on the agenda so that we can have a proper discussion at the next meeting. So I know we've had a lot of cities nearby, including El Monte, La Puente, Pasadena, Pomona, Santa Ana, Long Beach. Like, we've had so many. It goes on and on. But yeah, please be the 83rd city to call for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Esma Ali, followed by Gloria Angeles, followed by Stephen Carapino.
Good evening, councilmen. I just wanted to let you know that this is not about Hamas. Hamas has only been around a few decades. This is about 70 years of occupation, displacement of 1 million people being made homeless. What if it was one of you, one of us? That's what it's about. It's not about Hamas. It's just been around for a few decades because nothing else worked in that area. Now, back in Nazi Germany, councilmen just like you of the regular cities, they wanted to stick with the city issues, just like stop signs and city lights that were broken, that had to be fixed, and they wanted to just stay with those. But they did not think that they should stand up to the giant at that time. I mean, who's got guts to stand up against a giant? And also, they were afraid of being labeled Semitic at that time because that was a taboo. That word was just awful. If you were Semitic, you were an awful person. And now the fear most people have is of being labeled anti-Semitic. It's not about being either Semitic or anti-Semitic. It's standing up against what is wrong, against genocide sirs and maams. So at that time, the giant was Hitler. The councilmen, just like you, did not have the guts to stand up to him. And now the giant at this time is AIPAC. Stand up and call for a ceasefire, for God's sakes. Please. Thank you.
Gloria Angeles, followed by Stephen Carapino, followed by Mario.
Sorry, my name is Gloria Angeles. I'm a certified registered nurse and estheticist, and I've been serving my community as a professional nurse since 1991. I became an anesthesia provider in 2004. My existence has been serving my community. In July of 2023, I was diagnosed with endometrial clear cell carcinoma with a five-year, 50% survival rate. At the same time, I started having a conflict with my contractor, Manuel Flores Hernandez, who now lives in your community. The reason I'm here today, this person has victimized me. He has, basically, he has stolen from me, he's stolen my identity, and presently, he's trying to extort $30,000 from me. Putting that aside, the fact that I was victimized, Manuel Flores Hernandez, I am concerned as a citizen about his continual criminal activity and negligence regarding safety on the electrical work he performs. He is financially benefiting from illegal work that he does that is endangering your entire community. In 2020, during COVID, him and the owner of the house here in West Covina reconstructed the house from the ground up and created an accessory dwelling unit where he lives at without any permits. They have been given extension after extension since November 3rd of 2023. Basically, a picture shows a thousand words. This was the work that I had redone. I paid $12,000 because he had done work at my home that was done, I thought, by somebody that was an electrician. He was being the contractor. But it was just like a big mess. So as you can see from this picture, this is the electricity coming from the grid from the street. It goes through a cylinder, and then the cylinder goes into the meter. He puts an extra metal box here. The metal box then has the wires that come from the roof that get routed back into the house. That means that the electricity has no, it does not go through the meter, and it has no shut-off switch, which causes an immediate danger to anybody living in the house. Sudden surge could cause the whole house to burn down, and anybody that's doing service to the house, as said by the electrician that did the work, that it could be immediate danger, causing the person to be electrocuted. This is what he stated, "electrical junction box that had the roof riser wire spliced with the blue number four wires intercepting the riser wires," which is totally illegal and unsafe because there is no way of shutting that power off if you needed to service. In a conversation with, when I had with this Manuel Flores Hernandez...
Sorry. Thank you. You can give your information to the city clerk.
Stephen Carapino, followed by Mario, followed by Sarah Torres.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm here today, I'm a resident of West Covina for the last 40 years. I grew up in the area, well, 40 years at the Charlinta address. But I grew up in the area, went and attended local high schools here. And I'm here basically to talk about the signal at, as you might well expect, Citrus and Cameron. Many of my neighbors who are in the audience today made some very valid points, and I'm here to second many of them. I do this for a living. My company has worked on projects. Matter of fact, one in the city of West Covina that was at Amar and Azusa. We did the widening, changed the signals, spent about $6 million doing that project, but it's an expensive proposition and traffic rerouting. It took almost, we completed in six months, but it's an expensive proposition. You lack, you know, you can talk about public safety issues all you want about this, and I think my neighbors have brought up some very good points. The fact that, when was the last time you saw somebody slow down for a yellow light? Usually try to speed up to make the signal, so, and that's going to cause other problems. My biggest issue is a 45 mile an hour speed limit. Now, we can have another meeting just on that, but I'm going to dispense with talking about that now because I think it's a, the answer I got from the traffic consultant you had, I think it was Will Dan at the time, told me that they did a average rate of speed on that street, and they came up with 45 miles an hour. I would hate to think what the higher rates that came in at in order to come up with 45 miles an hour. So anyway, I digress here for a second, but I want to get back to this. So we talk about public safety issues. Let's, I've been dealing with this same traffic signal for over five years. I've met with Will Dan, TransTens, TransTech, we had a meeting nine months, a year ago, had the community. We had 67 community members at the senior center at Cortez. And we talked about, they made a PowerPoint presentation, and I will tell you, I was a little embarrassed because in five years, they hadn't shared anything. Maybe Will Dan never shared any documents with them, or maybe the city never shared any documents with them, because what they shared with us was stuff that we had heard over and over again. Matter of fact, it wasn't for the residents there giving them information, and we were telling them, this is what they need to do, this is what they need to look at. They might have come up with some better ideas. I don't know what they're going to present to you tonight and what they have presented to you, but I suspect it's going to be short-lived, and it's not thoroughly invested. But what I'm trying to pull out of this is the cost. When you talk about public safety, you talk about cost of this. They probably told you the average cost of a street four-way power signal is probably going to cost you about a half a million dollars, maybe could cost you up to $600,000 because you have no utilities there now and no place to put them. The other problem you have is a great separation on this street. Eastbound Cameron Avenue is a problem. You're going to have people at a high rate of speed launching into that intersection. You can't see the intersection. You cannot see the intersection from traveling east on Cameron. At a high rate of speed, trust me, you will have fatalities. I can, I'll say it now, and I think some of my, the residents have already shared that with you. You're going to have problems here. Okay?
Thank you.
Mario, followed by Sarah.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and adjoining city council. What a night. Usually in here just listening, but today I chose to come and speak on the traffic issue, but before that, all the things that are going on reminded me of this line from Dante, the poet Dante. "The hottest places in hell are reserved for those who, in a period of moral crisis, maintain their neutrality. Now, after some personal life encounters, I've come to realize life isn't fair, and we are not all created equal." But it doesn't mean that as humans, we can't strive for equality and fairness and justice. And sadly, we witnessed, you know, unfairness, injustice in here, you know, in the chambers just a little bit ago, and I'm a little disappointed in how that all played out. But also, in the spirit of that, I hear these people talking about the agenda item for the ceasefire, pretty much asking, "Stop the violence." I remember late 1980s, we had all the things going on, "Stop the violence." That's all that's asking. So moving on to the traffic signal. I live about a half a mile away from that intersection, but I travel it almost daily, taking my dogs out to Cortez Park. I sometimes drive a lifted, six-inch lifted Jeep, and just like the gentleman previously said, and as has been stated at many of the community meetings, I've been to all three for this particular issue. In a Jeep with a six-inch lift, as I'm coming, approaching Montezuma, going eastbound, I cannot see the stop sign. Okay? So you expect somebody in a Honda Civic to see that? And then they have a, you're anticipating a green light, and somebody's waiting on a stale yellow to make a left coming down Citrus? That's a disaster waiting to happen. As stated, I've gone to all the meetings. One of the things, the biggest takeaway is that 90, even 95% of the residents that go to those meetings, you know, come stating that they've been here since 2017, 2019 on this issue, fighting it. They don't want it. They simply do not want it. I drive it all the time. I never see a delay, you know, going, even sometimes I leave at 7:30, which is during, you know, school hours to go to the park. I do not see a delay in getting there, and I don't think a traffic signal is going to make that any better. Gentlemen spoke about, yeah, the 45 mile an hour deal. Yes, the way that the system works, you know, I believe it was at a 40 mile an hour. They did some studies, and because people are just not paying attention to the speeds, they got an average of 50 miles an hour, of which they take 80%, and said, "Okay, we have to make that 45. You put a green light there, that's going to change as well." It's going to develop a precedent that allows that to change. Last question, just to state, I would like to know, so based on the engineering judgments and warrants founded in the CAMUTCD and CVC, I'd like to know what the merits are for this traffic signal. Thank you.
Sarah Torres, followed by May.
Hi, my name is Sarah Torres. I'm a full-time student called Poly, and I also work with autistic children. I'm here to call for a ceasefire, working with children that have disabilities. I can't help to think every time I'm in a session of all the children in Gaza that are suffering for no reason, for simply just being children, and women, men, all suffering. And it's not even, I cannot even comprehend anybody that can be okay with it because if it were to happen to our loved ones or anybody we care about, we would be the first to voice our opinion. But just because they are across the sea doesn't mean anything. They need, they clearly don't have the words and the power to fight, so we need to fight for them. We need to make it known that it needs to be a free Palestine. Nobody should be allowed to take someone's land just because they feel like it. You know, this is one of the most well-documented genocides that you can look up, all the information to prove everything Israel has done, and then again, people in power do nothing about it, and that is completely unfair. You know, I didn't come with the speech prepared. I came with a strong mind and a really strong heart, and it's just, it's not okay. If you are a human, you would understand that this is not okay at all. You should not be able to sit at home, sit in your council chairs, and be okay with the fact that children, women, men, everything is being bombed. That is not okay, and an immediate ceasefire needs to happen. Thank you.
May.
Good evening. I address you today as a Palestinian who is in constant, who is in a constant state of grief because of the slaughter in Gaza that has caused immeasurable suffering. More than 34,000 Palestinians have been killed. 70% of those killed have been women and children. Miscarriages have increased by 300%. Women are forced to have C-sections without anesthesia. A child is killed every 10 minutes. Today, an Israeli missile hit a playground, and 11 children were killed. Palestinians in Gaza are being starved and have resorts to eating grass to survive. And one in three children under the age of two are experiencing malnutrition. I have a two-year-old, and that doesn't sit well with me. And I want that information to sit with you right now. This is a genocide. And as a representative of humanity, it is our moral duty to speak out against the brutal and inhumane slaughter of innocent Palestinians. I implore you to call for a ceasefire, an immediate ceasefire, that will put an end to the bloodshed and the slaughter of children. By advocating for a ceasefire, we send a powerful message that there is still a desire to see the humanity in others, that Palestinians have a right to live and a right to exist.
I have no further speaker slips, Mayor.
Okay. Acting City Manager, may you please respond to public comment concerns?
Yes. So just start with one of the first comments made as to why our police department was part of the 99 category and below. We are budgeted for 100 officers. As officers retire or leave our agency, we have to fill those, so we're always constantly trying to recruit. So we're always recruiting for police officers in our agency, and that's why we were in the 99 and below category, but we are budgeted for 100 officers. A lot of the comments tonight, or we had a lot of speakers tonight on the ceasefire resolution. I applaud them for coming and speaking on a topic that they believe is very important, when I know a lot of them mentioned they could be resting at very important, when I know a lot of them mentioned they could be resting at home, so I know it takes a lot to, you know, come to City Council and speak on a topic, so we appreciate that. The ongoing conflict in the Middle East is a tragic issue, it is a deeply concerning issue, and our hearts go out to those affected by the violence. It's crucial for all the parties involved to prioritize the safety and the well-being of civilians, and work towards a peaceful resolution. I know some of the members tonight said that they've been, you know, impacted, they don't get sleep, and my heartfelt condolences go to all those individuals that have, and families that have been impacted because of this conflict. And the other topic that was brought up tonight was the Cameron and Citrus traffic signal. That's on the agenda tonight, so I will reserve my comments for the presentation. And then the individual that spoke regarding the contractor issue, we will follow up to make sure that we can address it with whatever means we can within the city. And I think that concludes my comments for tonight.
All right, so we're now going to move to the regular agenda. Does any of my council colleagues want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Move the motion to approve Item 1, 2, 3, 4.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wu, and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, to approve consent calendar. Councilman, I think I have two title ordinances I need to read into the record first. My phone is ringing over here. Ordinance Title Number 2520, it, ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, adopting zone change number 23-02, rezoning properties in the planned industrial I-P public building P-W, medium commercial C-2, and heavy commercial C-3 zones, and rezoning the regional commercial, office professional, neighborhood commercial, and service commercial zones with mixed-use overlay in association with the Development Code update, and rezoning certain properties for land use consistency, and making a determination that the project is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15061b III common sense exemption. And we have ordinance number 2522, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Section 2608-2, permit required of Section 5608 fireworks display of Chapter 56 explosives and fireworks of the 2022 California Fire Code, set forth in Article 2 Fire Code of Chapter 10 Fire Prevention and Protection of the West Covina Municipal Code. Councilman Cantos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Aye.
Items 1 through 4 pass with a 5-0 vote, Mayor.
All right, we will now move to Department Regular Matters. Item number 5, consideration of Citrus Street at Cameron Avenue improvement options. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Is Jana, are you going to come? Well, we have Jana and Brian from TransTech prepare. Some of the comments regarding this presentation or this item tonight was why, if you want to sit over there. You know, in regards to why we're funding this intersection opposed to another one in the community. This was previously approved intersection, and so there had been funding that had been allocated for this particular intersection, so I did want to clarify that. Sorry, getting situated. Good evening, Mayor Tabatabai, Mayor Pro Tem Wu, and council members. I'm here with my associates, as Paulina said, Allison Richter up there, Brian Cervantes with Engineering, and one of our senior traffic and civil engineers, Mr. Bauman Janka, who, if it comes to that, can explain more details on the actual signal, if so desired. I have a short presentation of the facts, and can answer any questions at the end of the presentation. This, as our members know, and we've heard many comments, this intersection has been reviewed and looked at since 2019, with several community meetings and traffic commission meetings along the way. So, we have many residents who are either for and against, and we have included their comments in the back of our packet, if you care to look or print out the packet. So, in response to the city asking us to once again follow up at this intersection, we have collected new intersection counts, ADT, speed data, collision data, and we also looked on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday to make sure we're covering all the bases. We completed intersection warrants to see if this intersection met minimum thresholds for considering a traffic signal at this intersection. We have heard for, from residents, as I stated, who are for, as well as against a traffic signal at this location. All the resident comments and survey sheets that have been filled in at the various community meetings and traffic commission that we have been part of, is also included at the back of the packet, so council members can see and read what the actual, excuse me, comments were. So the first slide is showing existing conditions at Citrus and Cameron. So presently, we now have already the flashing stop sign. We previously put in radar speedback signs along Cameron. We've done the lane narrowing, narrowing for visual effect of trying to slow the traffic. So this is existing conditions, so I'm going to move into the next slide, so we just have some of the facts. As we stated, we conducted new ADT counts, not only on a weekday, but also on a Friday and Saturday. As you can see, Thursday is what's considered a typical commute day, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. So we have vehicles per day shown in our one column, and then Friday, that's usually not considered our typical weekday, it's usually the highest volume of traffic on the street, and shows in our counts, so Friday's a little higher. Saturday is typically lower base volume. There may have more pedestrians and whatnot, but the traffic is a little lower. We also did a 24-hour speed data for each of the three days, so on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we looked at Cameron between Coral Tree and Monizuma, Cameron east of Citrus, and then on Citrus north of Cameron, and Citrus south of Cameron, so all the approaches to this intersection. So, the 85th percentile speed is what is shown on the table. So, what is the 85th percentile speed? This is the record of speed in which 85% of drivers are traveling at or below. So this is based on the premise that the majority of drivers choose reasonable speeds given existing road conditions. So as you can see, we have the, the speed limit on Cameron, as mentioned, is 45 miles per hour, and that was set by a engineering and traffic survey, that is the law, by CVC decides the guidelines on how to set that speed. So, if you look at Thursday on Cameron, you, the highest was 49 miles per hour, the lowest 45, and then on Saturday, it, speed was creeping up, but it was still 45, 49, and then east of Citrus, towards Baranca, it was 46. On Citrus itself, we have a posted speed of 40 miles an hour, 85th percentile is on a Thursday, 39, Friday, 39, Saturday, 40, and then Citrus south of Cameron, which is going towards the golf course, is 32 miles per hour. Then we wanted to check our data, so we also did additional counts in September. The first counts were taken in January, additional counts were taken in September. So this also is ADT, which is vehicles per day. So, if you look at the September counts on a Thursday, it's creeping up slightly from 11,176 to 12,661. And this is west of Citrus. And then also on a Saturday, we are creeping up a little bit from the January count as well. And then we also looked at the 85th percentile speed in September, and it had gone up to 50. So you have the 45 mile per hour, and your 50 is the 85th percentile. So 85% of the cars surveyed were going at or below 50 miles an hour. As part of our data collection effort, we also did an intersection count that would tell us how many cars are turning left, through, and right at the intersection. This helps us when we decide if it needs left turn pockets or going through, where's the traffic going? When we look at ADT, it's only looking at a tube count across the road, and it only tells you the one direction. So you have through volume only. The intersection count tells us left, through, and right. So, we completed the intersection count at the highest, what's considered commute times, which is 7 to 9. Usually, we make sure we do the middle count when schools are typically getting out of city.
Excuse me, in the audience, if we can not speak, it makes it difficult to hear from the dice. Thank you.
Sorry. The middle time was 1:30 to 3:30, and the evening was 4 to 6. And this is what is, we consider standard peak commute times in the engineering community. We also did a pedestrian count at the same time that we did the intersection count. So, these counts just showed adults versus school-aged kids crossing at the intersection, and in this intersection, we have all, all legs are, have crosswalks. Then we looked at collision data, we looked at the last three years of collision data, and this is all reported collisions. So if there's a fender bender that they did not report to police, we don't have access to that. So this is reported collisions using SWITTERS, which is statewide integrated traffic records system data, and as well as police reports. If you look at this table, we had in the 2023, we had five reported collisions, as I think I heard one resident state. These were, out of the five, we had 1, 2, 3, 4 broadside collisions, and one rear end, and this is all inside the intersection, and that was for the last one year. In 2022, we had three collisions, and 2021, we had three more collisions, with the majority of being broadside. Okay, to reevaluate the potential need of a traffic signal, we look at thresholds or warrants as defined in the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and it's the, we call it the California MUTCD, Section 4C. So in this slide, it just shows what the warrants are. So there are nine warrants that we look at, that is based on, in the California MUTCD. They are based on traffic counts and collision data gathered for the East Cameron Avenue and South Citrus Street intersection. And this looks at the highest, highest eight hours of a day for the approach count. So we use the ADT traffic, and we look at the highest eight hours on that day, and we also, for each approach. So for the major street, in this instance, is Cameron, because it has more traffic. Citrus is considered the minor street, so we look at the same eight hours approaching the intersection from Citrus. So when we're determining if an intersection should be considered for signalization, an engineering study that includes existing traffic volume, pedestrian characteristics, physical characteristics of the location, is completed to determine whether the installation of a traffic control signal is justified or warranted. When properly used, traffic control signals are valuable devices for the control of vehicle and pedestrian traffic. They assign the right-of-way to various traffic movements, and thereby influence traffic flow. But the satisfaction of a traffic signal warrant or warrants shall not in itself require the installation of a traffic control signal. So a traffic control signal is not installed unless an engineering study indicates that installing a traffic control signal will improve the overall safety and operation of the intersection. As I mentioned before, there's nine warrants. So the first one is Warrant 1, which is the eight-hour vehicular volume warrant, so in eight hours, the approach counts met thresholds as defined in the California MUTCD. Warrant 2 is four-hour vehicular volume warrant. Warrant 3 is the peak hour warrant. Warrant 4, the pedestrian volume warrant. Warrant 5 is for school crossing, but this would not be applicable. It's mainly used for, if it's in front of a school, that pouring, the kids are just pouring out and using crossing. Okay, Warrant 6 is a coordinated signal warrant. Number 7, Warrant 7 is crash experience of the primary reason to consider installing traffic control signal, is there were five in a 12-month period. Warrant 8 is the network warrant, intended to provide platooning, so this one was not applicable, since it is already always stop. And Warrant 9 is at-grade crossing next to a railroad, so that also is not applicable. So as I stated, these are based on counts on three consecutive days at the intersection. I did hear that, that we were concerned that Saturday, would it meet warrants or not? So we did a warrant on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday using the data, and if you look at Table 13, I know it's numbered weird, but it was just taken from our report, the intersection met four of the nine warrants. Several were not applicable, but it met four warrants. So it met the eight hours vehicular volume for each Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Warrant 2, the four-hour vehicular volume, also met it for all three days. The peak hour volume also met for all three days. And the crash experience, you use it for, it just covers, it doesn't have by day, but it met it because it had five collisions in a 12-month period. So, based on the warrant results, as well as resident feedback for reducing the speed on Cameron Avenue, we have concluded in order to enhance and improve safety at the intersection, on the Cameron Avenue segment, there are three options for council to consider. So Option 1 is no signal installation, but with a road diet installation, and in a minute I'll go over what a road diet or lane reduction is. We said that, so no signal, so it stayed, it'll always stop, but we could install the road diet on Cameron. We're saying that we could start with hauling back to Baranca. We're saying that we could start with Hollenbeck to Baranca and see how it goes, and then go from there, how council decides. Traffic calming, road diet is a traffic calming measure. So it, traffic calming measures are lane narrowing, roadside, deflections, other features that are self-enforcing. It's kind of like the side stripes. It's a narrowing, psychologically narrowing the road. Traffic calming has been found to reduce automobile speeds and volume, mainly through the use of physical measures to improve quality of life. And I didn't mention this before, I guess I have it out of order, but I think what we heard at some of our community meetings was the residents didn't feel that the measures that we previously installed, what the rate, the speed feedback signs, the side stripes, the additional signage striping, was doing what it should do. They wanted additional measures. So this is one thing that we did look at to see if we could try and reduce the speed on Cameron. So we went with the road diet. So what a road diet, it shows the small thing on the side, is a conversion of an undivided roadway to a cross-section with fewer narrower motor vehicle lanes. The reduction in the number of lanes permits the inclusion of bicycle, sidewalk, pedestrian refuge, transit, and it allows on-street parking. So in this instance, we already have the side street, side stripes that allow parking. In this instance, we would reduce the two lanes each direction to one lane each direction, but have what's considered a two-way left turn lane in the middle. So that moves the left turns that need to go into a side street or into a residential neighborhood, you know, residents, they can get out of the flow of traffic and sit in that, that middle lane. We're also, if we go to the next slide, this is just one of the options. Option one, and it just shows a concept. So if you can see that it will still have the side stripes, what there is now, but it will also include, because there is roadway width to put like a buffer as well as the side stripe. So it's like a four-foot buffer that allows for a car to park there, they can open or close their car door, and it's not going to be in the flow of traffic. In this, this option, it, no signal with road diet, it would remain the flashing stop signs. We did see that, based on peak hour counts, we are recommending, if that is the council's decision as well, to stripe a left turn pocket, a through lane, and then a very short right turn lane. This would help reduce confusion by two lanes of traffic coming into the always stop. By having the striped lanes, they would know what lane they're getting in, so they can turn and hopefully wait for their turn to the right-of-way to make the turn. This is just, the next one is just a exhibit of the, what it would look like between Hollenbeck and Citrus. The idea of, we showed a signal here, but it doesn't have to be a signal if that's what your choice is. It just shows how it would work for the, the lane between, like I said, Hollenbeck and Citrus with the road diet. And the middle, it shows the one lane each direction, the buffer for parking. We like this option, that later on, it could be converted in the future, the buffer, if the city so desires with bike lanes and that. But, so you want to plan for future, so there is roadway width if this is considered. So option number two would be signal installation with the road diet installation. So at this, it would be kind of like that last exhibit, but we have another exhibit here. It shows what it would look like with a signal as well as a road diet. And then option three is, I think that's the next, oh, you got it. Yeah. Right. Okay. I was showing the exhibit. Sorry. Option three is a signal would be installed at the intersection, but no road diet. So if you didn't feel that road diet would make a difference, then you could still choose to pick signal installation with no road diet. We added this cost of a signal. The cost of a signal runs in around the seven to eight-hundred-thousand-dollar range for a signal. The city does have funds, Measure M, that can be used. The next steps would be advertising and hiring a contractor to provide full signal design plans and signing and striping plans. I know that in the beginning of this whole journey in 2019, some plans were prepared, but they would have to be checked to see if they showed all what the city has decided, whether it's left turn, right turn, whatever. I want to go back to slide, the next slide. So with the signal option on option two, yeah, sorry. We did put in a small right turn pocket, and this would require about fifty feet of red curb. There would still be red, or I mean, parking available for each of the houses fronting that. So two or three cars would still be able to park in that buffered area for both approaches on Cameron. There is heavier right turn movement for westbound. It is likely, as mentioned, from the school. It's heaviest in the morning and in the afternoon. This, if, by putting a signal, you would also, one of the benefits would be you would increase pedestrian safety because you have the pedestrian push buttons with countdown. It tells, you know, it starts at twenty-three seconds or whatever the seconds is to cross the intersection. They would have the PED buttons to cross. And then we feel that if a signal is chosen, that in today, we get weekly complaints from residents that left turn phasing is not installed at our signals. And right now, we're having an issue because the infrastructure is so old that in order to put in left turn phasing now, it requires replacement of signal equipment. The mast arms, the poles have to be replaced, and that's very costly. Luckily, the city has a few grants that are going through, that they got some funding for those, but it's very costly. So in this instance, if, if a signal is decided, that it would benefit the intersection to go ahead and put in left turn phasing. But left turn phasing needs a left turn pocket. So that's one of the critical decision points. So to plan for future, the left turn phasing, you have protected phasing is very important. The right turn pocket, you could have a shared through or, and a right. So that's not as important if that is the issue. But the left turn phasing would be smart if a signal is chosen to go ahead and do that. Option three, we have that one, we went over that. There is additional traffic calming measures. Oh, and then I wanted to go back. Sorry. I think of things that residents have brought forward. If the option of a road diet is chosen, I know one of the gentleman's comment was having a hard time backing out of their driveway. So I just want to show that on conceptual exhibit, option two, if the road diet is chosen, that you would have seven-foot parking lane as well as that four-foot buffer. So the person backing out of their driveway would have eleven feet protection of, I mean, it is striped, but you would have that protection of pushing the cars further away from the sidewalk and the driveway. Let's see if there is it. Additional traffic calming measures that we could consider is curb extensions at the intersection. They're kind of costly. There's some issues with drainage, but they can be done if that's an issue. Additional speed feedback signs, if so desired. Right now, we have three along that segment. We can put some more in there. Couple of issues that were brought up at our community meetings and traffic commission that we are not considering at this time is the installation of speed humps. The city has guidelines and criteria for speed humps, and Cameron or Citrus would not qualify for speed humps. Speed humps are used for local streets, and Cameron is considered a minor arterial. It has way too much traffic volume. It's usually three thousand vehicles per day or less, and the maximum speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. Cameron has a posted speed of forty-five and Citrus forty. So that is not considered. Lowering the speed limit. So I heard that several things said that the speed limit is too high. Now, the state has mandated how cities set speed limits. So there are guidelines, and that was done in 2017, albeit, you know, it may be high, but it was done to a certain format. Now, if the city chooses to go forward with the road diet, that's an extensive traffic calming measure. So what I would suggest is in the same after construction, to redo certain segments to see if people are traveling less. And so then you can make an amendment to your speed survey and adopt that. So you can't arbitrarily just say, okay, well, I think they should be traveling thirty. It's all based on guidelines and criteria set by the state, and this is done so that police can enforce the speed by using radar. And at the time the speed survey was done, the eighty-fifth percentile justified the forty-five mile per hour speed limit. And then, where's the signal one? Go back. We're going to go back to look at phasing for intersections, signals. There are different ways that you can set up signalized intersections. So, Baman is here to me if you have detailed comments or questions, but there's a lot of different ways. There's where you can rest in red. So the signal is, has red until a car pulls up to it, and then it triggers the green. You don't have to have Cameron green all the time. So there's fully actuated, that it'll tell when cars are there, when they're not. There's semi-actuated. There's a lot of different ways that you can do with signal phasing a signal. There's, I talked about the optimal with the protected left turn. So basically, the council has before you a decision to make on what your options are. A signal, you can decide on a signal. It would have the protected or, you know, at least the PED buttons, the countdown PED buttons. It would, if you set it to red or whatever, you can have platooning effects, stop sign. You would still have, depending if you pick the road diet option, there's a lot of options. You would all, you would have pretty much the same as it is now, or you can change it slightly if you choose a road diet. So I think that's, that's the end of my presentation, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem, you wanted to start off the question, go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. When I was here, 2019, when the projects approved, okay, sent to us to approve, okay? And then we have opposition, and then we table it, okay? And say, okay, send back, have a city engineer, traffic committee to discuss with all the neighbor, and to get all more information. And that's back in 2019. And the table, meaning when you get the information, you bring back, then the city council can make a decision. But we want to have a community outreach, so we want to make sure everybody, all the angle. But the purpose to put a traffic signal or not is try to improve the public safety. We're not trying to spend the money if the traffic signal, we create problem, we create fatality, we create people speeding, then what's the point to spend that money? So, so I hope you understand. We're not here trying to make the life more difficult for your corner. We're just trying to see how can we improve, okay? And the public safety, and due to a lot of requests, due to the accident. So, and another thing I want to state it, when you're driving on the Cameron, you are so proud living in West Covina. The Cameron is a beautiful, beautiful street. Okay? So I don't know, okay, if we want to change into a road diet, that option, that is really changing the grand of this beautiful street. And plus, if you're changing this road diet, I think you need to have all the residents living in that street to have agree upon. So then, then we need to have a lot of community outreach, because some people maybe don't like it, because they like what the look right now. It's really a beautiful, beautiful street, okay? If you find, as usual, go to the Baranca, or maybe go to the Citrus, you can see how grand, how beautiful, all the houses, the wheel cap, okay? No different than any of Pasadena, San Marino, okay? I'm driving there all the time. It's really a proud neighborhood. And we want to keep this continue to be a proud neighborhood. I hope you understand. Is that call for the traffic signal or not, I think the traffic engineer have to tell us, can they improve the safety? I think that is the issue. To do a drastic change of the look of the street and making narrow, I don't know that the entire street, the resident will agree upon. So if they really, the council want to go that route, they need to, I think they need to have a participant of all the people living on the street to agree upon, okay? That they, do they want to change, that drastic change? They may be very proud, okay, already on their street. And to, we don't want to, want to fix a problem and create more problem. Okay? We really want to see this intersection, that call for a traffic signal to improve public safety or not. Can they reduce the traffic, not try to create an accident or try to people speeding go through the line? I think the people really speeding is from Grand to Baranca. Let, let, let's, over that area is really problematic because it's a curve, and the people speeding over there. I don't think people from Hollenbeck to Citrus will speeding due to you have a traffic signal, and people really enjoying looking at that beautiful scenery of the houses. It's so pretty. So, so, so I really worry about to change the street and changing the neighborhood look. I think a lot of residents maybe will disagree. Should we install a traffic signal or not? I think about what you say, okay? And we do not want to have a blood in our hand, put a traffic signal, then people die. So we want to see Hollenbeck, okay, during this year or these three years, do they have a fatality? Or Baranca? Baranca, the reason we put traffic signal, because we have fatality on the stop sign. People don't stop on the stop sign, and our children got killed on the South Hill High School. So, and more than one time. So that's why we try to improve using the traffic signal to make sure the red light people stop. But some people, they drunk, drunk driving, they don't obey the stop sign or traffic signal, nothing we can do. It happened on Azusa, we have a fourteen-year-old kid got killed, okay? So, so, so because the person is under influence and blow through the red light. So, so, so how can we improve our city, especially in the intersection? So how we want to see is let call for it. So my question is, under, okay, during this so many years, okay, I know we have pandemic, this and that, so, so we table it, and now, all this community outreach and, and due to the research, okay, and the survey, if this intersection with traffic signal were improved... if this intersection with traffic signal, we improve the public safety, improve the, avoid more accident. True, I got T-bone 2018 on Cortez and Citrus, because people didn't stop on the stop sign. They just hit me on the side. It's my turn, but the lady doesn't know, and they just come down and hit me on the side, and I can even get out my, my car, just like pretty severe. But luckily, I have a Cadillac, okay, and a truck, very strong. It's not a Japanese car. So can take the impact. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I'm just talking about very proud, my, my Cadillac truck. Okay, and I'm inside, and only my door caved in. I got T-bone. So, 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 but the thing is, on the Citrus, on the Cameron, it's very busy intersection. It's always people confused. I agree with the neighbor over there. You are all my neighbors, okay? We, we try to see, find a common ground, and that's why it been delayed for so many times. And people want, people don't want. And how can we, Solomon, decision to make sure everybody happy? And I hope you understand, we're not here to create problem for you guys. We here try to improve. So, 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 based on your research, your survey, if this place would be safer with a signal? Because we don't want to spend 800, 900,000 dollars, no matter this is company restricted fund. But if it's not called for, signal cannot improve better for people to come down, because Citra is a very busy street. Why? They could go to, during the, okay, rush hour, they go to freeway, like myself. I have to go to Citra, go to freeway all the time, every day. So, so what I'm saying is, is this intersection, based on your professional point of view, is so many, many meeting, is this intersection can improve the public safety, the traffic?
It has a twofold answer. It met warrants. So obviously, there's a lot of traffic there. It had collisions. It all depends on how you design the signal. So the key is to do the left turn phasing. So then you designate right away for left turns, which all of the collisions that happen at the intersection, they wouldn't have, hopefully, the broadside, because that's someone turning in front of another car. You will have the pedestrian signals, which is the PED countdown. So when a PED comes at the corner, they're going to touch the button and the, you know, the green, green hand comes on and tells you how long you get to cross. I do know that with the always stop, we have had complaints with people fearing, because face, face it, we heard, you know, I mean, it's one that we have to join with enforcement, but it's hard for pedestrians to cross. You have 60 feet. You have two lanes, and a lot of the time, the always stop, they are rolling through, or they're not designating right away. So like I said, Mr. Janka can explain better some of the traffic improvements. So, you know, you do have...
I got it. So, so, okay, we need to have, okay, from you guys a professional that tell us this, yes, can improve. But the concern would be some of the neighbor talking about, okay, we let create speeding, and people will have a fatality, and that we are trying to avoid any fatality, and rather than create a fatality. And number three, so you can answer this question, is about how can we let them have a chance, if we want to put the traffic signal, they can come out and, or they can still park their car in the, because they might have, I saw that some of the houses over there have a hard time, okay, and to get into their home. So what is the way we can, that's why last time, 2019, we table it, is try to work with them. It's, hopefully, we can get a win-win for, for all the resident living over there, plus all the people commute, commute in their neighborhood.
Councilman Katos?
Just to clarify, Jana, with, under option two, with the left turn phasing, it would, I'm just, just to make sure to, to repeat this, it would address the parking issues. So the residents along the corners would have three parking cars lengths to be able to park. There would also be 11 feet of space for protection if cars are pulling out of driveway. So that would be addressed. And at the same time, with, with left turn traffic phasing, then that would, that would, along with, with signals there for pedestrians, that would also address the safety issues. And that is all under option two?
Correct. That's if two is choose signal, and then also road diet. And road diet is more, we need to take direction from council if you want us to pursue that, because there are things that still need to be done to do a real design of that. But yes, it would have the, the buffer and parking. Now, it does, right now, it has the side stripe, so people are, can park, but we can't do that extra four feet, the buffer, because there's not the lane width. If you leave it as it is, you have two lanes coming through. So there isn't the lane width to do that.
Oh, there isn't the lane width, lane width?
If you do not choose, if you choose signal with no road diet, then you still have what's existing, that buffer, that we do have the side stripe. So there is a, the seven to eight foot of side stripe there already. So it's just with the road diet, in this instance, you would have the additional buffer, the four foot of buffer.
So the road diet would add four, four feet to that buffer?
Correct. Because you're eliminating two lanes, you're going to one lane.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protem Wu would like to ask his question again, so we could get some clarification on the answer. Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, because we just have, we're just very concerned about this, so everybody want to jump in. But I just need a answer regarding my question. One, we talk about, is this intersection with a traffic signal, can they improve, okay, and the public safety, the traffic safety? And second thing, resident talking about, okay, and potentially, if you put traffic signal, you might have a fatality due to people speeding through, okay, green light or red light. So there's a second issue they're concerned. Number three issue, I think just answer, but the diet option, road diet, I think is problematic due to it's such a big, okay, and you're changing everybody in the front of their home about this street, maybe that you need all the resident over there to support. But we're talking about, okay, if we go to signal, okay, but can they still get out the car? Can they still park the car in front their house?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bauman Janka. I'm a registered traffic engineer in California. Just to let you know, very quick introduction, I'm a public agency person myself, so I'm really, really here. Even though I'm a consultant, I'm here as extension of a staff. I have worked about 30 years in the public agencies as a traffic engineer. To answer your question about the safety, I'll give you some national data. This is not just West Covina or neighboring city. Normally, traffic signals reduce, and I think Jana mentioned that, in terms of the safety that is perceived or can be achieved as a, as a traffic signal. Traffic signals, normally, they reduce the number of right angle accidents. Sometimes the rear end accidents increase a little bit, but it's a give and take. So the most of the severe accidents usually happen when you have a right angle accidents. The rear accidents, even though it may increase a little bit, but they are less severe. So yes, traditionally, traffic signals improve traffic safety because they reduce the number of right angle accidents. The issue with the stop sign, the current situation that you have right now, and I think one of the residents mentioned, is that you have a multi-lane. Stop signs really are really more suitable in a residential area when you have only one lane of traffic coming to an intersection. The problem that you have at this intersection is not the visibility of the stop sign. It is, it has nothing to do with it has LED or not LED. It is the right away issue. People, when they come to traffic, when cars come in two lanes from each direction, you literally, during the peak hours, you have eight cars at a stop sign, two cars at each leg of the intersection. So it gets a little bit confusing of, you know, do people, two cars that are side by side, do they go at the same time? Do one is stopped, the other one goes? That is the source of the confusion. At a four-way stop situation in a residential area, normally, you do not have as many accidents. But here, Jana reported that in the past year, it has been like in the past three years, four accidents in, in one year, twelve months. So in 12 months, you have had five accidents. Again, if this was a residential area, you wouldn't have this many accidents. The accidents are happening mainly is because of a right away issue and a right away confusion issue. So that's kind of a part of your...
Regarding the fatality, the resident think, okay, say, if we have a traffic signal, maybe we create people speeding and create even more severe accident that people get killed.
That is really not the cause of the accident. Traffic signals don't cause fatalities. Fatalities are caused because of people in attention, because of the UIs, because of a lot of other reasons. Just a traffic signal by itself does not cause a fatality. And one of the things that Jana mentioned, you also have the option of, the beauty of the traffic signal is that, and I explained this when I, a few months ago, when we met right out here with the citizens. The beauty of the traffic signal is that if you choose to, you can operate it in different ways. Two, I'll just go to two or three versions of it. One is that you're normally, you run it as a traffic signal, just as you have as Baranca or Hollenbeck. Basically, green, you know, the people, as they come to the, to the, you know, they take their turns. Another version of it, you can put it on flash, like you can have flash it yellow on the major street, which is the Cameron, and you have it red on the side of the street, which is probably not applicable in here, because you have a lot of traffic on both, both sides. The last version that I mentioned to the, to the committee was that you could literally have the traffic signal, what we call rest in red. So the traffic signal would be red, most of the time during the non-peak hours, it will be red. When cars come to the stop sign, there are loops in the pavement that trigger, they send a message to the controller, then the signal turns. So that, in effect, it kind of serves like a metering device. So you, you discourages the speeding during the non-peak hours, during the nighttime hours. So people will not be able to just to speed and go through, through the intersection. They, they slow down, they come to a stop, then the loop triggers them, then the signal turns green, and they go. During the peak hours, of course, when there's congestion, the signal will operate, you know, in a normal fashion, green and red and all that. But during the hours that is non, non-peak, and there is very light traffic, you could choose to operate it that way.
So we can program?
Traffic signal, there are different versions. You have more choices how to operate the signal. That's what I'm saying.
And number three, about how can they get out on the intersection if we choose the traffic signal? I got it. You, you say we can put on the red, like a stop sign, so during the, so in that way, people have to stop. And then we become green light during the, the slow, slow season, slow time.
Right, right, right.
And number three will be how the resident in that four corner, how can they get out, okay? And we see if you have a traffic signal, can it will be interrupt for their quality of life?
Right. Well, the, the only thing that I can answer, give you is, you know, you have a signal at Hollenbeck. And I have looked at the driveway situation at this intersection, and I have looked at the driveway situation on Hollenbeck. Hollenbeck has driveways next to the intersection too. I mean, this is not a freeway. This is, the volume actually on Cameron is not very, very high. It is about 12,000 on each leg. It is not in the neighborhood of 30,000 or 40,000. So there are plenty of gaps during, during the hours, during the minutes, that people can get in and, in and out. And Hollenbeck, there are driveways, at Hollenbeck, at all corners, and I don't believe there is a record of complaints to the city that we cannot get out of our driveways at that corner. People are able to do that. So, so that's, that's my answer to that.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the first to see all these options, and I'm pretty sure it's probably the residents' first time to see all these options. I personally would like this to go back to the residents', you know, community outreach, outreach survey, to see what's best, what's the best option for the residents that addresses all the concerns, such as the driveway, the parking, you know, the aesthetics, just everything, so that we get the residents' feedback. Because to pick an option right now, I know we have technically four options to choose. One, which one of them is provide alternative direction. I, I personally don't feel comfortable making a decision on any of these. I am for calming measures. I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to see safety and, and everything. But I, I feel this would be best coming back to the residents, addressing all their concerns, and maybe another option would be, you know, coming back to us at a, at another date. But that is my recommendation.
Sorry. Councilman Katos?
Can staff clarify its recommendation regarding traffic diet versus no traffic diet because of a concern of relating to traffic jams and, and congestion that would be caused by traffic diet? Or would that not be the case, based on the traffic study and the, and the volume of cars going through each day?
We believe that the volume on Cameron is not high enough that it is reducing the number of lanes from four to two will cause any problems, especially when, if there is a traffic signal, because the traffic signal would monitor the traffic going through the intersection.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions. First, on, on the five accidents, they, they, they were not serious injuries. So from my understanding, the speed is what, what causes the fatalities and, and most serious injuries. Is that correct?
Yes, speed.
Okay. And so I think one of the things when we're talking about the, the road diets is that the built environment will naturally slow folks down. I, I understand that the, the wider lanes actually cause people to feel more like they're on a highway, which, which does increase speed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I, I think if we are talking about safety, and especially pedestrian safety, from what I understand, when, when pedestrians, because I know we're talking about the crosswalk, but also on the sidewalk, from what I understand, parked cars are actually a kind of a safety measure for pedestrians. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, they shield the pedestrian. That's why we do that. The side stripes, which we tried, and parked cars. So it narrows the lane, so visually, people, it's been found that people drive slower in narrower lanes.
Correct. Okay. So I, I think, you know, when, if we're, if we're talking about pedestrian safety, we're talking about bike rider safety, if we're talking about wanting to slow people down so that way, any accidents we have are not of the fatal variety, it's one of the reasons why. I, I do appreciate the, the road diet is one of the options, because I do know from, from the research, that is, that does create safety. I, I did have, because quite a few people brought it up, and I know we've had other intersections where the, the speeding to, to beat the yellow is, is, is a concern. And, and the fact that with the force, four-way stop, there, there were no fatal car accidents, I guess I would ask, is that a, a concern of people trying to beat the yellow faster speeds if we don't include a road diet, you know, especially on, on the very wide street?
Bauman, do you want to answer that?
Collisions happen at traffic signals too. I'm not going to deny that. So just because you, you, you put a traffic signal, it doesn't mean that you will not have accidents.
Right. And so, so I guess the question would be, would you agree the built environment, though, can, can slow people down? And the natural human error you just mentioned, we're going to have human error.
Talking about the road diet?
Yes.
Yeah, the road diet will definitely change the environment. It will be only one lane, and just putting two lanes of traffic into one, it will make it a little bit more, I wouldn't call it congested, but it's gives it a little bit more, you know, less opportunity, let's put it that way, less opportunity people for, to, to speed along that road, just because you have a little bit more traffic now in, in the lane.
Okay. So, so, and so it really would depend on our priorities, right? So if we're prioritizing safety, then you, you definitely would want to include a road diet. Okay. As, as for the, I guess, the... As for the, I guess, the traffic light versus the stop signs, again, I guess I would refer back to the accidents we have had have been of, you know, as people mentioned here, have been very, very slow, right? It's people making mistakes about when to go, but they're not doing it at a high rate of speed. Would we anticipate that with the lights, that we would have higher speed accidents than we would have at the four-way stops?
Most of the four-way stops in the collisions that we did find, the five, were the broadside, and it was all failure to yield. So yes, they are going slower. You do have cases that people run the stop sign. I mean, there's always, you know, people do things, you know, how they do it.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if they don't want to stop, they do the California stop and they roll through. So that happens.
Right.
Signal or a stop sign. But yes, the collisions that we did show, none of them were the fadals.
But.
Severe injury.
You'd agree a roll-through isn't going to be as violent as someone trying to beat the yellow?
Correct, unless someone runs the stop sign. Then you have the same idea on the signal.
Right, which we haven't, the last two years, that doesn't seem to be the issue.
Correct.
Okay.
Just another thing, if it gives you a little bit more comfort. Again, with the traffic signal, there's some opportunities also that you can do with the signal timing. The yellow times can be increased slightly so that people don't get caught in the middle of the intersection. There is a feature, we call it all red, which is basically one, you probably have heard about, one or two second of all red. So basically, after the yellow finishes, you bring all the approaches to a red, red signal, so that nobody, even if somebody runs the yellow, they will not get caught in the middle of the intersection when the other approaches.
So, I mean, just because, again, I mean, the technology sounds great, but the technology also fails. I know when we have had these bad storms, right, lights not functioning, and then, you know, so the cost of upkeep, right? Because once, you know, there's an initial cost, but then there's the upkeep cost, which you wouldn't have with the stop signs. So what does that look like?
I don't know the history of the maintenance cost for the city for each signal. It's a few thousand dollars per year, probably, or something. It's mainly changing of the light bulbs when, you know, when the bulbs burn out and things, they have to do some routine maintenance once in a while and all that, so.
Okay, so a few thousand dollars. Okay. Any other question?
Yes, Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we're proposing to have a street diet from Hollenbeck to Citrus on Cameron, and then from Citrus to Barranca, right? Is that the proposal?
Correct. So. A trial.
That'll be a trial?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, are we going to road diet the rest? I mean, are we going to go all the way to, what is it? No, not just Grand, but I mean, the other way, going west?
Azusa.
West Covina Parkway? Are we going to go all the way over there and road diet everything? I don't believe in road dieting. That's my opinion. That is a huge street that needs maybe a signal, maybe not. I think that it should go back maybe to the residents. But my understanding also, I had a resident that had a concern about if someone is speeding through a yellow there, and I guess there's some dips there that they say they're going to be flying up in the air. So, I mean, that's something to consider, I guess. But I just don't think we need to do the road diet. And as far as the signal, I'm, I think, what's the difference between Hollenbeck and Cameron? And Cameron and Barranca? And then move further east, then you have one on Grand. So all these signals are there, but yet Holland, I mean, Cameron and Citrus won't have one? Kind of doesn't make sense to me, but I think the residents should have a say, and I think that it would be a good idea to have the residents have an opportunity to talk about what they want and what they don't want. So that's all. Thank you.
Just for information, the signal was brought up to all the, at the community meetings, the traffic commission. The road diet was not. So take that into consideration.
Yeah, and I think, you know, fortunately, we just had our mayor's hike this past weekend, and I think that was something that came out of the hike, is how walking some streets felt very unsafe. And there did not feel to be protection. There's nowhere to bike, and a lot of residents actually appreciated going and doing the walk through the wash because it was protected, right? You didn't have to fear of cars. And so, again, I think if, we're going to make a decision on whether we're prioritizing. I mean, the data is clear that the road diet make it safer. Now, there's a trade-off, right? It will cause a little bit more congestion. But again, it's, what is the priority? If the priority is safety and public safety, then the options with the road diet are the ones that are most safe. Now, if safety is not the priority, or not the highest of priorities, then maybe we would try something else. But I think it's clear from the presentation. Now, I do think that if the community hasn't been presented with the road diet, then definitely we need to go back to the community and say, okay, here's, now that we've studied it more, this is what the road diet presents in terms of public safety, in terms of pedestrian safety, in terms of bikability, walkability, and this is an option to go along with the traffic signal or the four-way stop. And the community should be able to speak on that. And I agree with what the councilwoman said. So I will, Mayor Protem Wu has some questions?
Yeah, no, I'm just, since, okay, the road diet option never present to the resident, I agree with, okay, and the councilwoman Lopez Viado regarding, which will bring back to the, and not just at Citrus and Cameron, since this road diet is going to impact entire street. So you need to expand it, okay, the notification possible from Azusa to Grand, because this is a major, major street. And all the residents live, a lot of residential neighborhood, it's a beautiful, beautiful street. So the residents, they need to have input, and we need them to say what they want. Do they want like this currently, or they want the road diet to narrow? Okay, like, they're the neighbor, this is their street, and they need to have a say. So I moved the motion to table this and send back to the community to show to the resident from Azusa to Grand, and notify all the residents on this street, okay, and surrounding neighborhood regarding what they want, okay, and they need to participate, have input, okay? They want a road diet, or they want the, they want the traffic signal, or they want like this, okay? And so in that way, we can have the data, okay, and come to. And then another thing I want to request, to have accident on the Barranca and Cameron after the traffic signal, how many, okay, accident we have, and the same thing to the Barranca, not Barranca, okay, Hollenbeck and Cameron, we want to do a comparison, the stop sign and the traffic signal, and what kind of accident, what kind of a severe accident or fatality, we want to see the number within the 12 months, okay, period of time, so we can make a comparison. But I moved the motion.
Okay, so, yes, before we deal with the motion, Councilwoman Diaz had questions or comments?
Thank you. Just a comment. I think that if we're going to go from Azusa, why not go from Vincent road diet?
But since.
Two lanes.
Since, I understand, but since they provide this, okay, option, and since from Azusa to Grand, basically one street, okay, I know, of course, then we can extend it even more from Azusa to Vincent. Yeah, it's quite true. But I think, okay, they're talking about Hollenbeck and to Citrus, they just one portion, it doesn't consist with entire street. So that's why I say, you can ask a manager, say, let's go to the West Covina Parkway.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, if we're not going to be consistent, and we're just going to worry about this little section where it's going to bottleneck, in my opinion, I figure if you're going to road diet, road diet. But another thing I have to say is, the big issue here is our enforcement. We need a lot of traffic enforcement. We need to get after people that are speeding. We are not doing that. And I know that we don't have enough officers out there. I know it, and that's something that we are working on, but that's something that needs to be done. And the other issue is, and this is probably for a West Covina School District meeting, but our kids don't know how to drive. I don't think that we have the education in our schools like we used to when we had driver's ed. People are not safe out there walking. I know it, I've seen it. I mean, people are close to getting run over because people do their California rule. They don't stop. They don't count and think one, 1,002, okay, now it's your turn. Or the person to the right is the person that goes first if you guys meet at the same time. There's just these rules that these people don't know. They don't know how to drive.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Yeah, just in general, after COVID, everything, just everyone, not just kids, adults, traveling every day, accidents happen every day. Obviously, I was involved in a car, a bad car accident, so that's a wholly different, it's a wholly different topic. But in reference to this, I know the study has been done for this section, the funding is for this section, and, you know, I do like the road diet. Like I said, whatever is best for the community. You know best your streets, where you live at, and, you know, going back with this new options is eye-opening, because the road diet is new for us and everyone and for that.
Hold on, before Councilwoman Kontos and Mayor Protem Wu, just, I want to be clear, because we did have a motion. So I want to make sure we are all understanding what the motion on the table is before I allow some other people to comment. So can you reiterate the, well, let's do, can we do the motion first? Yeah, let me, let's share the motion first.
The motion, as I understand it, is to table the item to bring back to the community to make a decision to bring forth additional accident information at Barranca and Cameron and Hollenbeck and Cameron over the last 12 months.
Extend the.
The road diet. Okay, since the road diet never present to the resident, and if I don't like the road diet, but this is their street, so then people need to participate, see, okay, how they think about road diet.
Okay, so the motion is including to extend, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted clarification. Do you want us to bring the signal back as well, or just the road diet?
My, okay, including the.
To the residents, to community.
Correct. The same option you have, one, two, three. Previously, you didn't provide the road diet to the resident, right?
Correct.
So right now, we want to bring everything, including the signal?
Signal.
Okay, including why you have a road diet with signal and a road diet only. So the same thing you present to us, hopefully can present to the resident on less entire street, so all the residents can participate about what they want.
Okay. Before, Councilwoman Lopez Viado, so I do think that, Councilwoman, you mentioned that this was specific to this area, and I understand the motion wants to extend our view of where the road diet should go. I don't think that's appropriate, but we do have the motion, though. So did we, you want to make a comment?
Yes, but I just want to make sure, once it goes back out to the residents, that the radius of notification is expanded, so it's not just the 500 portion of, as what one resident mentioned. We can do that.
Councilwoman Kontos? Mayor Protem Wu?
Yeah, I agree 100%, but due to, they propose certainly have this road diet option. My understanding, we just either have a traffic signal or no traffic signal. Okay, now you have this road diet, it's kind of all new, narrowed down the street, and when you narrow down the street, you cannot narrow down the street, only one section, right? It's from Hollenbeck, like you proposed, you proposed, basically from Hollenbeck to Citrus. Now then, how about from Citrus to Barranca?
No, it's from, we proposed from Barranca to Hollenbeck, because it had the same roadway dynamic. So once you go further west in the city on Cameron, it has a whole different dynamic.
So really quick, so I can amend my motion. So basically, from Hollenbeck to Azusa, is it different dynamic?
Well, you have different street widths, you have commercial thrown in with residential, you have a couple of schools you're passing, so it, yes, it has a different dynamics.
And the only.
It may not fit all the way down there.
The only one school you passing is Barranca, you have South Hill High School, okay, from Hollenbeck, okay.
There's West Covina High School.
Then we go to, then you will pass Azusa. Now it's all residential.
No, if they stretched it.
The West Covina High School is passed Azusa in the west.
I mean, we would have to explore that to make sure it's.
No, we're not going to pass Azusa, okay? The dynamic, what you just mentioned, is what I'm just ask you, if you say dynamic, but what dynamic the difference between Hollenbeck to Azusa? Okay, that's all residential, similar to the Barranca, similar to the Hollenbeck to Azusa. Is it same houses, okay, and same street, and the same four land? So how can there be different dynamic?
Can I clarify something? Are you asking, is your concern the transition between where we start the road diet on Hollenbeck before and after that intersection, and how that's going to flow between those two areas, one with road diet and one with not? Or do you want to add road diet between Azusa and Hollenbeck?
That's why my, okay, because it doesn't make any sense if you just start with a Barranca, okay, no, I'm sorry, to Hollenbeck to Barranca, and you have the issue, the same street, and it looks ridiculous, you have four land, okay, and Barranca, you become two land. And then after, okay, after Barranca, then you become four land again. So where's the consistency on this beautiful street?
We can go back and take a look at what that transition would look like, what road diet would be appropriate at that intersection, and bring it back.
You just don't want to spend the issue, we just, one section, just want to.
We want it to flow.
You need to have a consistency. We don't want to destroy the beautiful street, okay, and at the same time, we want safety. And so I think, okay, so my motion basically, with this traffic department, okay, a committee to look into this option to present to the community, okay, that, okay, basic resident that will be notified regarding all this option, and because when you go to the road diet, then it has impact to almost entire resident over there, okay, it's not no longer of a couple houses on intersection.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Can you repeat the motion in a second, so we all know?
You might be lost.
I think I can do it. So one is to go back to the community for input on the road diet with the traffic, traffic signal, with the light, to go. road diet with the traffic, traffic signal with the light, to go, to look at road diet, to extend it to Azusa and to Grand, and looking at what road diets would be appropriate for those areas. And then to bring back the accident counts at Berenca and Cameron intersection and the Hollenbeck Cameron intersection.
Is including the looking to the, from Berenca to Grand, that is a very problematic street, okay?
Yeah, yeah, Azusa to Grand.
Thank you.
Yes. And then to make sure that we notify residents that would be impacted away.
Okay.
Streets are on diet. It's funny.
Okay, does anyone have any comment before the vote? Any other comment to make? Okay, so we will close this out. Roll call.
Yes, I have a motion by Councilman Wu in a second, by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilman Kontos? Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, we are moving to city council reports. Any AB 1234 conference and meeting reports? Seeing none. Any city council requests? Councilman Kontos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask about, to revisit an issue from a few years ago that I actually had on one of my items from when I was running originally. And I was just wondering if staff would be willing to look into solar farm possibilities up in the Upper Ridge with the BKK area, because it could be an environmental way to increase energy, renewable energy, and also generate revenue to the city. And I understand that there was a proposal back in 2020 that could be possibly considered, but I don't know if that's ever been revisited, and I'd like for that to come back somehow.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Councilman Kontos, second by Mayor Calderon Tabataba, to look into the possibilities of a solar farm at the BKK area. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabataba?
Aye.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then I will, I will go ahead and make my request. Again, one of the things as electeds is, and especially as local electeds, we are the closest to the voters. We're the most accessible. We are the ones that they can come and speak to, and then we can speak for them. As some of you may not know, currently, right now, a member of Congresswoman Napolitano's staff is watching this meeting, just as a member of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio's staff is watching this meeting, as is a member of State Senator Susan Rubio's staff is watching this meeting, as is LA County Supervisor Hildell Solis's staff is watching this meeting. And they watch these meetings because what this council, what this body decides, does represent what the people of West Covina want. And it's why we do have public comment. It's why the public comment is not just on agenda issues, but it's on any issue that is concerning the community. And so, you know, a ceasefire resolution to be agendized does give the community an opportunity, all members of the community. I mean, tonight, we saw members of the community that want a ceasefire resolution. But I'm sure there are members of the community who do not. But when the item is not agendized, they don't know to come to speak and to share. One of the great things about our system is, is we do have this local government, and when we agendize items, we notify the public that this is going to be a discussion, this is going to be a topic, this is going to be something you can weigh in on, and then we can all make informed decisions. After the last request, you know, I was able to speak with Jason Mott, the Jewish Federation, and it was a great conversation. And that conversation came about because we brought the request on the dais. And again, I think we have precedent, other cities have shown that this is something that local governments can and should take up. It's been voted on and approved in many cities. It's also been denied and failed in other cities. And that's okay. I think for the city of West Covina at this time, to be on record, one way or the other, is why our system exists. And so I am requesting that we agendize a ceasefire resolution. Now, I am not requesting it for our next council meeting, because I would like, if it is seconded, that we are thoughtful, and that whatever we present has input from many stakeholders. So that is my request. And so I will wait for a second. All right, yeah. Seeing, seeing, seeing no second?
No second.
The motion will die? Excuse me. Let's, thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, during the public comment section, I did forget to let you know that there were two emails that the city clerk's office received. There are copies at your seats for you for that, and then they've also been emailed to you as well.
Thank you. Excuse me. Sir, 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 can you, can you please step out, please? Sir, thank you. Any... Thank you.